That's good.
Recording in progress.
All right, good evening and welcome to the June 6, 2024, meeting of the Brookline School Committee. We'll start with our administrative business, the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions on Driscoll change orders, Pierce change orders, or student field trips? Okay, seeing none, we can move to a vote. Jesse? Okay, so I moved the consent agenda. All right, do I have a second? Thank you, Helen. Carolyn, you had a question?
I did have a question, sorry. I feel like in what I looked at online.
There was a change order that had some red notes on it. And sorry, because I'm looking for it now.
It's not in there.
Oh, okay, it's not in here. So is that something, I'm guessing you know, that's your territory?
Yeah, I just don't know which one you're talking about.
It was a Pierce, it was the one that is?
I think the number seven.
It's either four or five.
Yes, seven is a field trip. Well, it had, I feel like it was something that was like $327,000, but it was redlined and changed to $150,000. But these numbers don't sort of reflect that, so unfortunately, I don't see right in front of me what it was. But I wanted to understand what the change was to the change.
Sometimes what happens is, you know, they submit what it is they want, and then we go over it. And it might be the owner's project manager that would look at the numbers and say, no, this is incorrect, that they've overestimated on something, or something got changed, and that's why it's less. I don't know exactly. I'm trying to look now for what it is.
That's okay. I don't want to hold anything up. That's okay.
If you want, we can hold the two Pierce ones, and I can look.
No, I don't want to do that, but thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, are there any more questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, let us move to the vote. Oh, you do have a question, Jesse?
Yeah, a comment. I did pass it on to Betsy, but in reading through all of these attachments, I did notice that one of them discussed, by the way, I have it here, Helen, it's Pierce Project Miller Dyer Spear number seven.
Yeah.
And it's page two.
Yeah.
It's on the left field memo, and it says that the numbers have been reduced.
Yeah.
That the, before release of the funding, MDS and Leftfield have to verify and certify that the subconsultant scope of work is enough to carry through to the entire project before release of the funding. So it went down from 326, 785 to 178, and of that total, 270,000 for something that was redlined down to 150. The total amendment amount is therefore 178,000. And that is on number, that does match number Roman numeral five on the agenda.
Right. Is that helpful at all? Or depends how much you want to get into the weeds with it.
Thanks, Jesse. I don't want to take time to get too into the weeds. Other than, I guess, I guess I'm looking for whether, some context of whether it would be sort of typical to have this level of change order. And it looks like, I also looked at the agenda for the building commission meeting for next week, and there's more, so it's like $500,000 worth of change orders. And is that kind of typical?
You mean for next week?
Well, between this and next week.
Yeah, all projects, you estimate what you think you're going to spend, and then sometimes there's added stuff that happens. For instance, we will probably get a change order because the select board decided to not have the, one of the entrances from Harvard Street. Well, the designer has to redesign, so that's a change in what they've done already, and so we have to pay for that. So that's the sorts of things. There's, there's a fluidity. What we do is try and keep track of those, you know, change orders. They should be about 5% of the total project at the most, sometimes less. And, and we watch that throughout the project, both in the school building committee, the building commission looks at it all the time, and LAP, our project manager, is also very cognizant of costs and makes sure that things are, that we're keeping track of it. At some point, we can look at Driscoll Schools as an example, and how many change orders that were all together.
Yeah, no, thanks. And I get all that. I just didn't know if 500,000 at this point in a project was sort of, seemed typical. But I don't want to get into the weeds on this, really, and hold up.
I think the good news is that we're 2 million under on the demolition, and that's a huge, huge piece. So, you know, hopefully, we're not going to try and use it, we're hopefully save the taxpayers money, but there is a cushion, and we have contingency.
Right, the, the, the comment that I had had to do with, on the MDS architect memo, there seems to be maybe a miswriting of the study they're going to do. This was the May 3 letter, "A Study of Elimination of Left Turn Lane on Harvard Street to School Street." It's really from School Street to make the left onto Harvard, so they may have.
Actually, not.
Okay.
It's not incorrect. So there are two left turns that were going to be eliminated.
Right.
The one that's from School Street to Harvard going north.
Right.
Is still in the project.
Okay, perfect.
The one that's from Harvard Street, turning left onto School Street, is the one that got eliminated. It's sort of a shame that that happened.
Can you explain that again?
Yeah.
Now you can turn?
You can turn left in both.
Right.
You have special left turn lanes on both streets.
Yes, yes.
Both Harvard and School Street.
Yes.
Actually, all, I think it's all for?
Yes, all four sides have left dedicated left turn lanes.
So two of them will stay the same. The, the one that's coming School Street, going over to St. Paul Street, or Aspen Wall, I guess, isn't then St. Paul, right?
You mean Aspen Wall turning left onto Harvard stays?
No.
School turning left onto Harvard?
I wish I could draw it. Okay, here, you've got, this is School Street.
Yeah.
This is Harvard Street.
Yeah.
There's a left turn lane here that's going to be eliminated. Okay?
So you'll no longer be able to turn left from School onto Harvard?
Correct. You can't, no, you can turn left, but there won't be an individual.
A dedicated lane.
A dedicated lane.
I see.
School Street will be a two-lane road.
Because the school is going to go on to a diet, right?
It's becoming smaller, so there'll be two protected bike lanes all through School Street.
Got it.
The other side, the, coming from south, from, going, from the south side of Harvard Street going north, making that left turn, they are going to leave that left turn lane. The project, well, not the project, Transportation Board wanted to change it. They wanted to not have the dedicated lane, allow the sidewalk to be larger in front of the school, and also have space then for the garage entrance. That was all one part of it. And all that I, from my understanding, is no longer.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I now don't see any more questions, so perhaps we can move to the vote. Jesse?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Yes.
And we have Stephen Remote.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. All right, next we have a farewell and thank you to Laura Clevis, our outgoing student representative. So Laura has been with us for the last two years, with an interruption during the spring of 2023 to serve as a page in the U.S. Senate. I would say that Laura has always brought a reporter's eye and reporter's work ethic to all of her presentations for the school committee. I was looking back, and a good example of this is what you did when we were considering ninth grade deleveling. I think you said that it's fair to say that the discussion surrounding ninth grade deleveling is largely dominated by parents, and I think that teachers and students should have their viewpoints adequately represented as well. So what you did was to survey 362 students. You summarized their arguments that they provided, both pro and con. You interviewed two teachers who had been deeply involved in, in coming up with the WISP ninth grade course. You talked with them about their motivations, like the background for the course, how the course evolved over time. You described your own experience in WISP and how that had influenced your work at BHS. And then you finished with some observations on inequity in our school system. And this was a really strong contribution to the discussion that I don't think will be forgotten by, by those who heard it. So you're going to be a very, very hard act to follow. We would like to thank you, and we wish you all success at the College of the Street.
All right, I'll say my bit now. Hello, everyone. I hope folks are having a good evening, and that I don't have to introduce myself yet again, because I've done that up here more times than I can count. But for those of you who don't know, I'm Laura Clevis, and I'd like to say I'm your school committee student rep, but I actually can't, because I graduated high school on Sunday, and this is actually my last school committee meeting. Now, a part of me can't actually believe I'm saying that. For one, school committee meetings have become an integral part of my life, my identity, and some might even say my reputation. Letting go of that will be difficult. And then there's letting go in general. This report is kind of my swan song. It's weird, because it didn't really set in on my last day of school, or at prom, or even graduation, but as I stand before you all at this podium, it feels real. I'm leaving. Incidentally, speaking of standing before you, the first time I presented to you all as a body was here, during my sophomore year. That meeting, which took place sometime in April, is seared into my memory. I presented the Tackling Injustice Hate Crime Bill alongside my fellow student council members and friends, Ariya Niaosa and Matthew Nock. And at the time, that already felt huge. I remember walking to this room feeling very out of my element. I felt more comfortable writing new school rules for the student handbook than presenting them, much less to a group of nine adults I barely knew. I can't pinpoint what exactly changed, but over the course of the meeting, that feeling of intimidation transformed into one of inspiration. You'll remember that the body was in the thick of labor disputes with the BEU. In their proud union member red t-shirts, the union flooded the room immediately after a presentation carrying "Fair Contract Now" signs and chanting slogans. The show solidarity was striking to me. I left the meeting soon after, something about coming home for dinner, but I was in it long enough to develop a sense of respect for what goes on in this room. And I admit that when I ran, I had no idea what I was getting myself into. I still get nervous when I start presenting, I don't know if you guys can tell, but all I knew was that I wanted to speak truth to power, advocate for my fellow students, and give an unfiltered look at what it was like to be a student at BHS. And a part of me feels like I won that election in 10th grade, all thanks to sheer luck. I definitely say that at the time, my passion for the role outweighed the skills I brought to the table. I was very much a diamond in the rough, and I still am to some extent, but I learned a lot on the job. It's at this point I hesitate on truly reflecting. Perhaps the exposition I've given you thus far of my school committee story masquerades as such, but not really. To be completely honest with you all, I'm at a point in my life where I feel much more comfortable listening than speaking, much less writing. My mom likes to say that my head is a very busy place, and I think that she's right on that count. I'm in a period of intellectual growth. Ideas abound inside my head, and I think that because of this, I just felt the need to sit out on certain discussions and just observe. Certainly, this was something I did most of my time at school committee meetings. I hope that in saying this, I don't give off the wrong impression. I didn't stay silent because I was bored or disinterested in the work we were doing. Rather, I spent many meetings in silent appreciation of the way this body conducted itself. In the first place, it dawned on me that the number of moving parts required to make meetings go smoothly were innumerable, so I was in awe of the work being done here and the way people did it, as if it was just another Thursday. It didn't matter that Big was streaming live on YouTube, or that school committee meetings could be watched on television sets around Brookline. Everyone was just doing their jobs on top of normal daytime professional obligations. That, in my book, justified a degree of reverence, one that oftentimes, as a skeptic, dumbfounded me. Then there was the matter of just being in this room. Issues my mom would talk about as a PSB educator, or my dad would discuss when receiving emails from BHS or the superintendent, they'd all come to life here. Whenever my students would ask me, my fellow students, sorry, asked me why it's important to pay attention to school committee meetings, I tell them that it's because their education is a direct product of the work that goes on in this room. They automatically have a vested interest in it. That's why I presented on student-led initiatives like Days of, and the effort to make the volley a category two holiday, or the students leading the fight for more and safer gender-neutral bathrooms at BHS. I wanted my peers to understand what I understood from the get-go, that if there's something that needed changing with the way things were at BHS, you came here. This is not just a room where the superintendent, former educators, people with degrees in education, and parents come to make the rules. This is also a room for you to take ownership over what is yours, what you are receiving from this town. Not just in education, but the tools to become a responsible citizen of this town, and ultimately, this world. I can only hope that through my work, I elevated the needs and concerns of those who felt as if they lacked a platform, even when my own voice trembled while doing so. I have a lot of fond memories associated with this place. Former member Nancy Ray-Gore used to always greet me with a smile and an invitation to check out the kitchen for a snack. Nancy, if you're out there, thanks for looking out for me. Mr. Olipski, God love her, was very precise with her positive feedback, so whenever she gave me a head nod, a smile, or whispered "well done" at the end of my reports, that was enough positive affirmation to take me through the weekend. On this discussing the body's most pressing issues with Mr. Ehrenberg, a man who I can truly say took all sides of an issue into account before casting a vote. Mr. Ehrenberg, your dedication to understanding the inner workings of the school system is something I deeply admire. I also found out I got into college here, in the lobby of this very building. If you look at the security camera footage from December 14, 2023, at more or less around 8:15 to 8:30 PM, you're going to see me sobbing uncontrollably with my dad, and then running up to that bust of MLK and kissing it on the lips. My parting gift is that mental image. Seriously, though, the individual moments of connection I made with each of you, and the kindness and grace you all extended to me, did not go for granted. From the bottom of my heart, thank you. I'd also be remiss if I didn't take the time to thank Betsy for her friendly attitude and seemingly endless well of patience. Betsy, I often submitted materials to you at the last minute. I imagine that on top of the other responsibilities you have, this did not detract from your level of stress. I don't think you'll ever know my appreciation for your tolerant natures. Words do not do it justice. Thank you. I'd also like to thank Jen Martin and Mr. Anthony Meyer. Jen, you gave me the confidence to do this job when I lacked it, and encouraged me to go after ideas and presentation topics that quite frankly, were a little too ambitious. Thank you for being my launching pad. And Mr. Meyer also contributed mightily to many of my reports. Thank you for the work you do, Mr. Meyer, as head of school, and for finding the time to sit down and talk with me during various times over the course of what was a very demanding school year. I'll leave you all with this. Given all I've witnessed this year at meetings, it seems as if our town is not immune to its fair share of political polarization. While it's a little unrealistic to assume that those attending school committee meetings and speaking at public comment comprise a microcosm of the larger Brookline community, I know for a fact that spaces like these hold more importance than ever, and I know you guys all know this, too. My one request is that you all remain steadfast. The commitments you made over the course of your election campaigns, hold true to them as best you can. Remember that while data is important, it is not the full picture. What is happening on the ground is often not best conveyed through numbers. And most importantly, please serve every single Brookline student to the best of your ability, not just the ones with particularly vocal parents. Kids like me then benefit. I have faith that the future bodes well for the public schools of Brookline, and that the schools will be led by good people, people with wisdom, people with heart. And while I have a hard time saying goodbye, I'm letting go right now, grateful for all which you have taught me, and what I have to give to others simply by dint of being a part of this body. And so, for the last time ever, I'm signing off. This concludes my report. Thank you all, and have a very good night.
Thank you, Laura. We're going to miss you, too. Does anyone else have comments or remarks? Helen?
Well, I can't say how much I've thoroughly enjoyed having, sitting next to you throughout the years. You've been incredible, really, in addition to the school committee. You make us proud. And I think, you know, it's interesting that in my few years of being on the school committee, every single student has gone on to either an Ivy League or a top-10 school. It's been amazing. So I don't know if it's because those are the students who apply, or because of us, but I think it's because of the students. But thank you, and we wish you the best of luck. You can always come back and visit.
Thank you. Thank you so much, and I plan on doing so. I do plan on coming back.
Oh, yes, Stephen.
I just really briefly, Laura, I think you've been terrific as a student representative. I'm really going to miss having you, give you reports, and just having your presence at the school committee meetings. You've, you've not just been a really wise and informative presence, but you're, you're so positive. And I think in these meetings, which can be so tense and difficult, you always seem to have perspective and faith that decisions will be made to the best of our abilities. And I feel like that makes us all want to be the versions of ourselves that you are rooting us to be. So I think you make us better just by your character. I really think that. I also just want to say, I know you said that you're in listening mode right now, but you are also exceedingly eloquent, and you're never more eloquent than when you're an advocate. Those, those few times when you've really taken a position and argued for it, I thought you were completely persuasive. And whatever you wind up doing, whether it's more on the reporting side or on the advocacy side, well, I hope it's on the advocacy side, because I just think you're incredibly compelling when you are arguing for something. So I just wanted to share that, and I'll say I wish you all the best.
Thank you. Really appreciate you saying that.
All right, Laura, we have some flowers for you on your, on your departure. Congratulations again.
You could stay for the finance update, Laura.
All right, we move on now to our superintendent's report and the spotlight on excellence.
Andy, while Linus is getting his slides up, how does student rep get chosen? Is there another one coming in the fall? Have they already been selected?
Yes.
Oh.
Yep.
Okay. Who is it? Is it a surprise? You don't know? That's okay. Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
All right, good evening, everyone. Our superintendent's update, as well as our spotlight on excellence for the night, for tonight, for the past, I think, three weeks, lots of busy activities in around the district, certainly as Laura just talked about. BHS graduation was this past Sunday, and an awesome experience out in the 80-degree weather there on Cypress Field. Very, very nice graduation program, and there were several that were, I think, the week prior, the two weeks prior, the ACE, I attended the, a portion of the ACE graduation, a portion of the Metco send-off, as well as the AALSP closing. And then earlier this week, we had the Roland Hayes renaming ceremony, that again, was very well attended, and the students did an outstanding job with their performance there. And members of Roland Hayes's family was also present, his daughter, and then I think several of the grandchildren were also in attendance. And so with that, I will jump into a little bit more. You're going to hear from, an update on, from finance through Mariah and myself tonight, so we won't include any of that, or, and you're going to also hear from OSS directly, so they are not included in this portion of the update. So for the Office of Teaching and Learning World Language, we know that we've had a shift in the K5 version of the program, a suspension while we work to rebuild that. But grades six through eight have made significant strides in planning a robust program that equips students for the future. We want to thank the teachers and staff that worked on that for their dedication and hard work that will give us a foundation toward rebuilding the K-12 program. The World Language Task Force has concluded its work and finalizing its recommendations in the following areas moving forward. The development of thematic units, professional development on proficiency standards, and scheduling, and the role of the importance of world language in the PSB. The Pearl Lab has also completed its thorough review of our high school world language program, and the school committee will receive that report in the fall. So we just want to preview that for you, that that's on the horizon. Sure.
I thought Pearl, I thought Pearl was hired using the funds from the override to reimagine world language, and I thought it was, I'll say, not just high school. Is it only high school?
Jody, you want to talk more about that?
Thank you. Okay, because that says high school, though. It says review of our.
That's because we're, well, Jody, go ahead.
Okay. Pearl did our review of K-8 world language last year, which we were working off of. And this year, they reviewed our high school program while doing professional development with our K-8 teachers. So we've been engaged with them. For the whole thing. Yeah.
Good clarifying question there. Our ELA, for the update there, the work with Hill has concluded. Hill for Literacy has concluded, and the last two sessions were focused on professional development, on what makes a strong literacy program. And with that knowledge, we're going to begin, we've begun the construction of the Literacy Action Plan. The PSB has applied for and awaiting news on acceptance of Desi's Tiered Literacy Academy. And the Tiered Academy aims to improve literacy outcomes for students across the state. The academy provides strategic support for leaders, coaches, and teacher leaders, helping them implement evidence-based systems, structures, and practices to support the development of literacy skills in a culture of deeper learning. So again, remember, we are in the process of adopting a K8 literacy program with specific emphasis on launching K2 this, in the, in the upcoming school year. The Office of Educational Equity has shared its collaboration with the Office of Student Services by working through the Climate, Family, Culture, and Climate Survey to understand the experiences of students, parents, caregivers, and teachers and staff. And this, this feedback will have crucial impact on how OEE plans its professional development for FY '25. So the work for '24 is underway. You'll see that, I think, in the next slide here, where the work with the equity leads, some on bullet two, has begun with their professional training, beginning on Culturally Responsive Teaching and the Brain, which is a book that's been out by Zeretta Hammond for quite some time. OEE continues its residency programs. OEE continues its residency programs, and they are wrapping up the school year with Ronkel Baker and Lincoln, and continues supportive work over at FRR. And with that, we are going to turn our spotlight on excellence. Are there any other questions before we jump?
I have a quick-
Okay, sure.
Sorry, Mariah.
Please go ahead, Carolyn.
Thank you. I just wanted to add, Dr. Guillory, you mentioned that you attended the ACE graduation and a Metco celebration and an AAPI celebration. There was also the SWS graduation, which was fabulous, but I don't know, I don't know if any administrators were there.
Awesome.
But that also took place.
Yep. Other questions?
Mariah.
I have two questions. On the OEE slide, it said that the equity leads have already started, so when we were here two weeks ago-ish, we heard that their applications had opened, but there was maybe 15 or 16 applicants for the 22 slots. So I guess my questions are, did we end up with 22 leads? Is my first question, or are we less than that? And then, I thought this was starting in FY '25, the stipends are for FY '25, so are we just starting the work early and that's okay, or?
We're starting the professional development aspect of that, but the work begins in FY '25.
The stipended work, which there are peer leaders.
Right.
Okay.
And I don't believe that we've gotten to 22 as of yet, but Claire and Kristi are still working on that.
Okay. And then, what is the relationship of the Literacy Action Plan to purchase of the literacy curriculum? Is the curriculum part of the plan, or what's?
Jody and I discussed that, and I told her to be, look, I anticipated that question. Be ready.
I guess I hadn't heard the term "Literacy Action Plan." That was the first time it came up tonight for me, so, but I don't often get to curriculum.
The Literacy Action Plan, the adoption of a literacy program, is one of the action steps in the Literacy Action Plan. So, our work is, of adopting the program, is nestled within that plan, and in addition, we'll have professional development in that plan, as well as benchmarks for how we know we're being successful with the changes that we're making to our instructional program.
Is the Literacy Action Plan written down somewhere?
It will be. It's under construction.
Under construction, okay. One of the signs with "under construction." And then, and it's aligned with the strategic plan as well?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Jesse, I think I had a question.
Yeah, so at the subcommittee meeting in which literacy was discussed last time, there was also a slide that talked about the formation of a committee, including parents and maybe residents from Brookline, to weigh in and discuss the choices. So I didn't see that in the update, and K-2 is starting, I was going to say, stay up there. You know, the K-2 is starting now, we're hearing, in the fall, so when is that going to take place in terms of the parent, the choice of people, the meetings and the output?
The choice of people is going to be starting almost immediately. We're going to be reaching out to CPAC, LPAC, BAFN, as well as other parent organizations in order to have parent representation, robust parent representation. Meetings will happen over the summer and through the early fall. We're actually looking at a December implementation because we're a little bit behind where we want to be.
Thank you.
Thanks. Just following up on two of those questions. One, Jody, could you say more about the Tiered Literacy Academy? I think it's, specifically, how that grant might result in technical assistance that would align with professional development provided by wherever we purchased the curriculum from?
I am so excited about applying for the Tiered Literacy Academy because it's free. But what it is, is it's high-quality professional development from the state. We'd get nine sessions of technical assistance around areas such as how to enhance our literacy plan, how to conduct data analysis to make sure that our program is working, as well as the adoption of high-quality instructional materials. So there'll really be a professional development group from the state that can help us as we continue to do this work. It's led by very respected people throughout the state, and I'm really excited and keeping my fingers and toes crossed we get accepted.
Would that be PD to OTL, or would that be PD to, like, literacy specialists, or who would that PD be?
It'd be PD to everybody. For, one of the things that I really like is it has a "train the trainer" model, so we can help rebuild our coaching program with it, and it would also be to the wider group that is going to comprise this literacy leadership team that we have.
So, sorry, it's just buried in that, was the idea that maybe we might restart a coaching program at some point? That there might be a TOT, that we might use a TOT model going forward, other than through the PD that's provided through wherever we purchased the curriculum?
Correct.
Okay. And then, the second question, I just wanted to follow up on what Mariah asked about the equity leads. The PD for the equity leads, is that, is that around the, those 10 competencies that were developed by, that are under development by Christina right now? I guess that's for Linus, unless Christina is here, or Claire.
And I'm not sure if Claire is in the audience on that, Stephen, but I will ask her that question and then get back to you.
Thanks very much.
A quick question. So when do we expect to hear from the state?
They're accepting applications through the end of May, so I, they were accepting applications through the end of May. So I'm anticipating we'll hear before the close of school, before the end of the month.
And it would be for next?
It'd be for next fall.
Okay, great, thanks. And thanks for applying.
Jesse?
Just to clarify again, so when is the new program scheduled to actually start?
Scheduled to actually start would be December, is right now what we're on track to do.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all for your questions and engagement there. So with that, we will turn our attention to our spotlight on excellence. Since 1984, the Ernest R. Cavalier Award for Excellence in Teaching has been presented by the Brookline Education Foundation to Brookline educators in recognition of professional achievements and contribution to, contributions to the public schools of Brookline. Two awards are given annually, one to a high school educator and one to an elementary school educator. The educators receiving the awards are designated as Ernest R. Cavalier Associates in recognition of their dedication to the ideas of Dr. Ernest R. Cavalier, a distinguished public school leader, educator, and Brookline superintendent from 1931 to 1964. This year's deserving recipients are Driscoll art teacher Olivia Rayald and BHS English SWS teacher Kiera Flynn Carson. We are pleased to have with us this evening BEF Executive Director Liz Askely and recipient Kiera Flynn Carson to share their remarks. I'll now turn the mic over to Liz.
Thank you for having us again. I'm Liz Askely, and I just want to say a few words about Kiera Flynn Carson. Kiera started teaching middle school English at the Pierce School, but after a couple of years, found her true home at Brookline High School, in the school within a school program. Her colleagues described Kiera as extremely kind, devoted, and beloved, compassionate, joyful, and caring, among other complimentary adjectives. Ms. Flynn Carson throws herself into everything she does, whether it is creating and conducting impactful and challenging courses, encouraging students to find their voice, facilitating and overseeing students' meaningful conversations inside and outside the classroom, helping to lead the day of change and acting as the liaison for sharp warriors, or running and setting up monthly lounge shows for and with her students. She encourages all of her students to dig deep and push themselves, leading them to have authentic learning experiences and moments of real growth. Her genuine interest in her students and colleagues leads her to be many students' trusted adult, and she maintains relationships with her students for years after they have graduated. Her willingness to take on projects such as creating the advisory program at the high school and continuing the social justice class is an example of her dedication to her students and Brookline High School as a whole. The BEF is so pleased to honor Kiera Flynn Carson with this year's Cavalier Award.
Thank you so much. The mic is working? Okay, I have tried to very heavily excerpt my speech, so I've cut it about in half, but just to give you some context, I am a music lover and a drummer, and I set the speech up as, I often, since the time I was a teenager, I spent a lot of time making mixtapes and playlists to mark important moments in my life or important relationships. So the speech is set up as my Cavalier mixtape, and the songs are dedicated to influential teachers in my life. The first one was for my parents. I'm going to skip over the early years. It was my parents. I had a really formative math teacher. My eighth-grade math teacher was also the high school track coach at my school, and so he was in my life for five years and was an incredible human being, very influential. And then I had a really formative activist poetry professor who came to see my band play, to see my punk band play, and that kind of commitment to knowing us inside and outside of the class was really formative for me as well. Okay, so, you're coming in on track four of the mixtape. Track four, Survivor by Destiny's Child, is for my Jermaine Lawrence School students. One of my first teaching jobs was at a residential treatment center for teen girls who had committed violent or sex offenses, and who had also experienced considerable trauma. I was 24 years old. And my sheltered and optimistic worldview confronted the realities of the abuse and violence my students had experienced and also perpetuated. I wanted them to see that books could give them opportunities to process their experiences and feelings, that Beowulf was actually deeply relevant to their personal and therapeutic goals. We had powerful discussions. They hated the bluest-eyed Charlie Breedlove, and they had compassion for him. They felt deeply connected to Charlie because they too were simultaneous victims and perpetrators. I got to watch as they found a book that helped them see their lives in challenging and healing ways, that allowed them to write about and discuss their own situation through the safe distance of a text. Those kids taught me to shoot much higher than a skills-based classroom, that while I wanted my students to learn to read and write well, what I really wanted for them was to see the systems and the factors that limited them, to see themselves as capable thinkers and change-makers, and to start thinking about how to advocate for and liberate themselves. They were true survivors, and we made each other stronger. Track five, Run the World Girls by Beyonce, is for my Pierce Schoolwork Moms. I started teaching at Pierce in 2001 and was given the gift of the most inspiring, kind, and funny work moms a young teacher could hope for. Piper Smith Mumford was genuinely interested in supporting and developing my growth, even offering me my first English class when I wasn't yet certified. Kim Manasiewicz, the guidance counselor, became my confidante, processing the daily interactions that would have kept me up at night if she hadn't skillfully counseled me in my anxious or self-doubting moments. And Sally Schuman, special educator, and Gail Van Hatten, also guidance counselor, modeled the magical combination of open-hearted love for kids and the tireless ability to fight for what kids, especially the most vulnerable, need. Their actions revealed that a good education should afflict the comfortable and comfort the afflicted. Some kids do deserve more, more time, more resources, and more opportunities. Equity in repairing injustice was important work, and they did it one student, one class, and one policy at a time. Pierce School was infused with powerful love and care. Track seven, Jumping Ahead, The Monkey vs. the Robot by Pybald is for Dan Bresman, administrator in the SWS program. The chorus of this song joyfully belts, "We have the best job ever, yeah, we really got lucky." This resonates so deeply for me, and a major reason I feel this way is Dan Bresman. I remember sitting on a panel that Bob Weintraub organized to identify what kind of leadership we sought in our new superintendent. What came up repeatedly was the idea that servant leadership is the ideal, when leaders go to their staff to ask, "What do you need?", and then take action to provide the support that allows teachers and leaders to sustain the demands of this job. Dan Bresman, with his big heart, vast skill set, and giant toolbox, acts like the blindside tackle on a football team, who Keith Thomas, former BHS football coach, tells me, always protects the quarterback, especially from what they can't see coming. Dan protects teachers from the frustrating bureaucracy that can bog us down. He doesn't just allow me to be the kind of teacher I want to be, he clears the path to make it happen. I remember looking at him from across the crowded SWS lounge when he got hired and saying, "Let's work together for the next 30 years," and I'm so grateful that it looks like we really will. Track nine, We Are Going to be Friends by The White Stripes, is for the BSSCC, that's the Brookline Staff Childcare Center, parents. My daughter's age just so happened to align with the children of some of the most caring, dedicated teachers in the district, Roger Grandy, Danielle Rabina, and Lex and Keith Thomas. When our kids joined the Brookline Staff Childcare Center, I never imagined we would grow to become an almost communal family. We sit over a fabulous Greek spread Lex lays out in Danielle's kitchen and discuss parenting, but our focus often turns to how to get our students out of the transactional culture of comparison and competition that leads to anxious perseveration about college, gaming the system, making decisions that sacrifice authentic learning and meaningful risk-taking, and deteriorate student mental health. As both teachers and parents in the Brookline schools, thanks to the materials fee and the Metco programs, we are doubly invested in the education provided here. Our many years of experience give us enough context to have deep concern when we see the district value individual achievement over collective responsibility and centering equity, justice, and ethics. These are teachers with huge hearts who dedicate themselves to making real change. This song says, "I can see that we are going to be friends, but in truth, I had no idea how much I would grow to treasure my colleagues." Track 10, Is Magic by Olivia Newton-John, it's for the SWS students. In Bell Hook's book, Teaching to Transgress, she argues that a transformational classroom doesn't happen unless the people in it fall in love a little bit. By my accounting, I have fallen in love with the hearts and minds of over 1,000 students, and I have watched most of them fall in love with each other, at least pedagogically. When I try to explain SWS to my friends, I evoke the Great British Baking Show, where everyone is genuinely trying to do their best work, yet they both support and celebrate each other's accomplishments. SWS is the Great British Baking Show of school programs. Students genuinely get to know each other's work. They express pride in their peers when they see them improve in their thinking and writing. They develop writer's crushes on each other and feel inspired to revise and work harder. In my 20 years in SWS, I have witnessed the absolute magic of watching strangers transition into groups that bravely, vulnerably share ideas and papers, cry, and even ballroom dance together. Magic. I recently read that a common trait amongst happy people is that they had to do a lot of chores when they were young, because it taught them not just that they were capable, but that they were meaningful contributors to their families. I watch as my students make playful, wise, deeply intellectual, and challenging contributions to our SWS family. When they do their chores in class and through community leadership, I watch them develop their understanding that they are important here, because they truly are. In the song "Magic," Olivia Newton-John sings, "You have to believe we are magic, nothing can stand in our way." This line makes me think about the open-mic shows we have in our lounge, where I see kids work up the courage to sing or play a song for the first time, and finish only to hear uproarious applause, even if they stumbled, especially if they stumbled. What might we all be able to achieve if we were surrounded by people who believed so sincerely in each other's magic? Do we do it perfectly all the time in SWS? Hell, no. But when we keep it as our North Star, we are all the better for it. Okay, the last track was for my daughter, but I cut that one. My daughter is a seventh grader- My daughter is a seventh grader at Ruffin Ridley. And so thinking about my gratitude for being both a teacher and a parent in the district and her shaping the change that I want to make in our school, because it will be for her and for Clay High in just another year or so. I just want to thank you so much, because as a teacher, you don’t have a lot of moments where people pay attention and celebrate. And just to have the opportunity to write my educator story was really such a pleasure and a gift. And to, you know, have moments where I could have my family, my friends, and my colleagues mingling with each other at the Caverly celebration was really so special. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I should mention that Ms. Flynn-Carson was also the keynote speaker at the BHS commencement this past weekend. And I’m incredibly impressed that you were able to give two outstanding, inspiring speeches in the same week with pretty much zero overlap. Oh, thank you. All right, do any other school committee members have remarks? Mariah?
I just want to say thank you and congratulations. I mean, this year, every year when I hear these speeches, I’m always touched, and this year is no exception. You and Olivia are really spectacular, and just seeing the level of dedication and thought. And like you just said, your lifelong, your educator story, and it didn’t start when you became an educator. These are lifelong passions and commitments that crescendo and accumulate, and it’s really lovely to hear it. So thank you.
Carolyn?
Thank you. Well, I have to comment, because Kiera taught one of my children. So I’m struck by your including magic. You are magic. You are so deserving of this award. I think I told you the other night, every year I get really excited seeing who’s going to be the Caverly Award winners. And it’s never been a teacher who I knew until this year. And my daughter is graduating, and you have been such a formative, transformative presence and influence on her and her experience of BHS. You are a total professional. You push students to work and achieve with love and compassion. This woman is very special. When my husband and I were deciding where we wanted to invest our life savings to educate our children, we were living in Boston. And, you know, you can see a lot of things in magazines or whatever that say, “Good schools.” But for me, my phrase was always, my goal for my children, whatever path they take, is that they will engage with the world in a meaningful way. And I feel like with you and SWS, you’ve inspired my child to do that. So thank you and congratulations. And this is really exciting that I get to say this in public to you, so.
Helen?
Well, I have to say thank you. It’s been amazing knowing you and the work that you do. And I won’t say anymore, because I think Carolyn said most of it, but thank you for all you do.
So with that, the Public Schools of Brookline Spotlight on Excellence is awarded to... I’m still talking to you. The Spotlight on Excellence is awarded to Kiera Flynn-Carson, the 2024 BEF Caverly Award winner, with gratitude and appreciation of your professional achievements, contributions to the Public Schools of Brookline, and exemplifying the very highest standards of teaching each and every day. Congratulations.
All right, this brings us now to public comment. We have seven speakers signed up tonight, and we will begin with Bharati Kochhar. The floor is yours for three minutes.
Andy, while our speakers are coming up, can I just ask, Linus, one thing I meant to ask you earlier. Is there any update on the state TFM or TPF or whatever it’s called? Okay.
Well, I believe all seven speakers, we are together. We have a unified front here, so I’d like to invite the other six speakers up to join me.
There is one speaker who is not part of your presentation.
While we’re collecting, I’d really like to thank you. I recently learned that these are completely volunteer positions, and I’m really very impressed at the time, energy, commitment, and passion with which you do these jobs for us and our children. And we’re really here for the public schools. And so I’ll just start with introducing myself. I met a few of you before. My name is Bharati Kochar. I am the mother of two children at the Hayes School. We are all parents at the Hayes School. Nithika is in KC, and Sahana is in 2A. We moved to Brookline for its schools, as you were saying, and we’re thinking about, you know, now we have two little kids, and where do we educate them? And so we’re really, really passionate about public education, and so that’s why we’re all here. We stand unified as representatives of 86 parents for 46 children in the rising third grade at the Hayes School. We have been quite concerned about the class sizes, as we met with Dr. Guillory. And so that’s really what we’re here to talk to you guys about today. And, you know, over the last year, we’ve certainly been hearing a lot about cuts. I’ve attended other school committee meetings, which were absolutely packed. And it’s, of course, disheartening to learn about cuts, but we understand that you’re working in a tight environment. And what we heard and have been advocating for was the prioritization of keeping class sizes small and eliminating programs that perhaps would allow that to happen. And so, of course, it was very, very sad to see three programs that really support teachers and students in the school be eliminated. But we were told by our principal that this would facilitate keeping our class sizes small. Our second grade has currently 15 to 16 students in three sections, and we were told that this would be the case moving forward for the third grade. So, of course, we’re utterly dismayed a few weeks ago when we learned that despite cutting three significant programs, including the Word Language Program, which is a key reason for which we moved to Brookline, our class sizes were going to be doubled, or risen by 50% essentially. So that’s a very big rise in class sizes for a small, you know, kids at a small age who’ve been used to their small classes. So, you know, over time, we were thinking about, well, you know, is this really that big of a deal? That’s when we started talking to other people. And I learned that the third grade, since this is my first foray into the third grade, is actually a critical year in elementary education. Educator friends and fellow educator parents have told me that the third grade is really the first time that children are reading to learn and no longer learning to read. They’re testing, they’re doing homework, they have various, you know, much higher expectations, and it’s sort of a whole new ballgame over K through 2. So a pretty critical year. The other thing I learned was that this is when children apparently form their identity in development. And so without close interaction from caring adults, I think there could be a lot of interpersonal issues that really develop in this critical year. And so going from a class size of 15 to 24 or 25 could really result in a lot of other interpersonal issues beyond the academics. So I also then said, you know, this is all very good, but what do people do when they really don’t know how to react? And we had this very emotional reaction about this class size situation, right? So I said, “Let’s just see what Google has to say.” And usually, Google has a lot of good answers to things, and I thought it would just reassure me that this would all be okay. And I actually learned that Brookline and Massachusetts on the whole has typically small class sizes. And then we prepared a handout for you and the summary of the data that we collectively learned here. And it was actually very stunning for me to realize that we invested our life savings moving to Brookline to keep our kids in these wonderful public schools that really believe in a lot of the same things that my husband and I believe in. And now we were looking at class sizes that were in the worst 95th percentile in the state of Massachusetts. So that, I mean, is actually quite staggering to me from a K through 2 standpoint. There’s projected class size of 24 to 25 children in the third grade at Hayes. Then I said, “Well, you know, that’s Massachusetts, and Massachusetts on the whole probably does have small class sizes. And, you know, perhaps this is still not that big of a deal as context goes, and we just heard about sort of all the agony that goes into having children and thinking about their futures.” So continued reading about our true class, you know, is a small class size really important? What does a small class size even mean? And I heard from Dr. Guillory that there are some guidelines around class sizes, and sort of wondered, well, where do these guidelines come from? So perhaps, you know, this is all fine. We’ve clearly had people who are very thoughtful think about this, and I’m not an educator. And then I learned that for K through 3 education, a small class size really is, 13 to 17 is what the data support. And we’ve summarized one large study that says that. There’s another study in Wisconsin that looked at reducing class sizes to 15 specifically and comparing them with class sizes over 20. So a number of different studies in the United States, and all of them really support a class size that’s quite small, right? 15, 13, 17. I mean, these are much smaller numbers than we’re looking at right now. And very interestingly, but perhaps not surprisingly, the students that benefited the most from the smaller class sizes were the students that really needed it the most. And those are the students that I believe this district, at least on paper and from what I’ve heard, is really truly committed to, the students from the disadvantaged backgrounds and underserved communities. And so we’re really, with this class size enlargement, I think, hurting the students that can most be hurt. So that is also very emotional, I would say, right? And I started talking to students in the current third grade, parents of students in the current third grade, because they were in the same exact situation last year, where they ended the school year, they said, “You’re going to have 24 children in each class, or 23 children, sorry, in each class, and we’re going to collapse you into two sections.” And I’ve been hearing rumblings from the third-grade parents about how they were very happy with the school, and they hit third grade, and now they’re very unhappy with the education that they’re getting. And I wondered why. So I started digging into stories and learning about them. And apparently, teachers would not admit this, right? Because we have consummate professionals at Hayes. Our teachers are really absolutely wonderful, and they will not say this, but you can tell that they were stressed. There were activities and lessons plans that they could not do, which they planned for 15 to 16 kids. They could not do with 24 to 25 kids. And even just getting out the door for recess in the winter, kids could not get enough outdoor time, because by the time they all donned everything they need to do to get outside and then had to get back inside, there’s no time for recess. So they weren’t getting activities, they weren’t getting the trips that they used to get, they weren’t getting the activities that they used to get. And parents actually have heard from two disgruntled families that were very upset, and they felt that the classes were so chaotic despite having really, I think, some of the best teachers in the district. So it’s not a reflection, I think, on the teacher, but the setting that they’re being put in, where they cannot educate, that the parents had to pull their children out in the middle of the school year. Now, if that’s not a failure of a public education system, I don’t really know what else is, right? These are parents that want to keep their kids in school, and they have to take them out to protect their kids. And so listening to all of this, I was just, well, how did we end up here? This is pretty awful. I mean, I’m sure we didn’t intend to do this. Because last year, they were in the same exact scenario. They started off with, you know, 46 committed kids, and they said, “We’ll just, you know, merge them over the summer,” as it apparently always happens in Brookline. There was a few additional children, you just need two or three. And now they have 24 to 25 children in each class and started the school year at a much larger number. So I’m just very stunned to see sort of that same scenario repeating itself in what is clearly a critical grade. And we really do applaud the school for bringing them back down to three sections. I mean, that’s very telling to say that this two-section situation did not work for that class. And so I appreciate that they’re down to three sections. But what we’re here to advocate for is, please don’t make us do the same thing all over again. It’s a role of disservice to our children. So I just want to end by thanking you for the time that you spent at the finance committee meeting on Monday. We heard you, we felt deeply heard by you. And we just wanted to maybe reiterate a few things that came up as potentially unclear. So to be very clear, what we’re here to advocate for is for a third section for the rising third-grade class, the current second-grade class. We do have 46 committed students, and this is not just in your system, which obviously I don’t have access to, but you can tell we’re a very close-knit group of parents. This is a class where the trips have way too many chaperones, or sometimes way more chaperones than needed, and way too many parents in classrooms and donating things and, you know, all of this stuff. So this is a very tight-knit group of parents, and we know each other, and we’ve really committed that these 46 children are staying for the next school year, because I know there’s some concern about whether people are leaving and whatnot. And it sounds like there’s always new students that join over the summer. And so that really makes it seem like we’re going to be starting with maybe 24 or 25 kids. We’ve already heard of families that are looking at the projected enrollment, and they see that this rising third grade at Hayes is actually the largest classroom in the whole district. And so, and this is an old school with small classrooms. And so we’ve had teachers talk about their worry about having, you know, the rise of students and the aides that come with them. And so you’ll hear a lot of details about our class composition, which is apparently very unique and speaking from the other people in the school. And I think these things about who the class is really need to be considered as well. So just to clarify, we have 46 students that are absolutely committed to starting probably more students again in the fall. We’re looking at a greater class size. This failed once before, and we know this. It doesn’t seem to make a lot of sense to repeat this again. And this really does hurt the most marginalized amongst us. So we really are appealing to you as the school committee to help us out and make that decision now, with less than 10 days left in the school district or in the school year, because last year, they couldn’t hire a teacher, right? In August, when you see the class size at 25 and you want to hire a teacher, that’s very difficult, and it’s very difficult for a new teacher to walk into an absolutely new school year. So there is, I think, urgency to this. We know Dr. Guillory has heard us, but we wanted to appeal to you all directly as well. And we’d like to tell you more about individual scenarios that makes our class composition unique. Thank you.
Thank you. So Ms. Kochhar has spoken for 12 minutes. I would ask the remaining speakers to please time your remarks so that the presentation can be finished by 7:15. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Carlos Gilde Alcacer, and this is Jenny, my wife. So we have a son, he’s in second grade. So he is a son of immigrants of Ecuadorian and Taiwanese descent. And so he has been raised in this multicultural environment, learning three languages. So as you can imagine, you know, he has needed extra support to develop his language, his English language skills. So he’s part of this English learner program, and so that has been very helpful. But more helpful has been these smaller classroom sizes, where the teachers can really provide extra support when he doesn’t understand something, when he is too shy to express himself because he doesn’t want to, he’s like self-conscious about his English skills. And just like Alitos, there are many others, some of which are here outside, that have these issues. And as Bharati mentioned, you know, these are the students that would be hurt the most when teachers in a bigger classroom will be forced to choose between, you know, providing this additional support to this group of students or covering the material that was planned for the lesson.
So I myself am a deaf woman, and so this issue is really critically important to me, because I’m considering not only our son, but the really unique needs of the entire rising third-grade class. So I myself benefited greatly from smaller class sizes in the public school system that I grew up in in Rhode Island. And I am very confident, I’m certain, that I would not have reached the levels of professional success that I enjoy today without that experience, my formative years. And I know firsthand how easy it is for a child like our son and children like him, who require these services, to fall through the cracks, especially when precious resources like time and attention, individualized time and attention are scarce. So my husband and I, like many of you actually have expressed, and Carolyn has expressed, spent our life savings moving here, really, because we spend a great deal... spent our life savings moving here really because we spend a great deal of time considering where we wanted to live. And we consider towns like Wellesley and others similarly, and we ended up moving to Brookline specifically because we believed that the public schools of Brookline and Hays especially held a very strong commitment to supporting equity and diversity as important tenants in their educational philosophy. So I think we can all see that it's really an undeniable fact that classroom diversity is great in our class, specifically the rising third grade class. And smaller classrooms, as you'll see from the information that we've given and the comments that we're making here tonight, are going to benefit the children who most need that attention. So thank you very much for your attention today and for listening to our comments.
Hello. I am going to read my statement. I wasn't honestly planning on being here because I am a teacher as well and I had a class, but I ended up early. So I'm a little nervous because this is very emotional. Good evening to everybody. My name is Ana Maria Ramos. I am a mother of two Hays students and a former PSB substitute teacher. My family and I moved to Brookline seven years ago after Hurricane Maria destroyed our home in Puerto Rico. Out of all the states and cities we looked for to build a new life, we chose Brookline, Massachusetts, for its excellent quality of education and life. Both my husband and I made the hardest choice to move our family across the Atlantic, leaving our life behind in Puerto Rico. When our daughters entered the PSB, or Public Schools of Brookline, we were beyond happy with the amazing quality of education we knew our daughters would receive. One of the main things that I loved was the student to teacher ratio, which allowed for my daughter, who was in the RISE program, to get the attention she needed. Now, our daughter Mila is no longer in the RISE program and no longer needs an IEP. This is thanks to the level of attention our daughter received through that program. We have seen her learn, grow, and form great friendships at Hays. As an educator, I know what an immense transition it is to go into third grade. And with the collapsing of the classes, I worry my daughter will not receive the attention she still needs. I worry that the environment that you propose for her and her peers is not up to what we have experienced and expect from the Public Schools of Brookline. I have spoken with the current third grade teachers who have also shown concern and already had a stressful situation handling so many students this year. Teachers agree with parents that smaller class sizes are better for student learning, and I will add for teacher satisfaction as well. I ask that you consider the points that all the parents have brought up this evening and consider leaving the three classes that exist at Hays, rising third grade, which allows for students like my daughter Mila to have the quality of learning she deserves. My family and I appreciate your time and consideration this evening. And I want to add one more fact is that smaller classroom size results in greater teacher satisfaction and retention, which is critical for a high-quality school system.
I think we're getting a little bit shyer over here, but so I'm going to try to wrap this up. We saw this coming in September when we started hearing about the disgruntled third grade parents that had been collapsed and children that started to struggle, recesses that were being cut, activities that they couldn't do, I think, kids that didn't even fit in the space. Because as you probably know, Hays has an old, slightly smaller school, which it's okay, we're a small community and we're more about the people and the people that are in it, the parents, the teacher, the kids. We have the same amount of kids at this point that they had last year, so we know what's going to happen in September if the plan to collapse us into two class. Not only that, in addition to having the same number of kids, class composition matters to us. You've heard from RISE parents, you've heard from, we also have 504 parents, at least three with life-threatening conditions, which I believe is not a situation in the current third grade, but it applies to our class. It's, I'm a parent of a second grader and an incoming kindergartner. And with pride, I've always said, I'm part of the Brooklyn Public School system where we not only have great educators and great families, but we have these amazing small classrooms where the kids are getting what they need. So we just wanted to be here to please and ask you to look at the facts. We're talking about 46 kids at least, it'll probably go above over the summer. Class composition matters and also urgency. We heard in the subcommittee on Monday that there was a potential to revisit in July or August, and that terrified us because we don't want to look for a, first of all, we want a resolution on this sooner rather than later. And we don't want to look for a teacher in August when we know that there's a high likelihood of that not being, not happening. So we ask you today to please reconsider and help us get to maintain our three classes and also look at this, maybe after we've solved this, as a broader issue in terms of also the rise in classes. Smaller and lower teacher to student ratios are key to quality education. And we've all invested our life savings here and made Brookline our community. From Puerto Rico, Taiwan, Ecuador, Dominican Republic, which is where I'm from, my husband's from Norway, it's an incredibly rich community. And we really want to make this work and we're hoping that you guys can help us get there. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you very much. Just before calling on our last speaker, I wanted to remind folks that we are here to listen and our policy is not to respond during meetings to public comment that we receive. But of course, this is something that's very much on the collective mind of the school committee. You heard us discussing it yesterday with special reference to Hays and we're also going to continue to discuss it at finance later in the month. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our last speaker is Faith Dantowitz.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today and for all you do as a school committee. My name is Faith Dantowitz and I'm here all the time. No, my name is Faith Dantowitz. I have a student in the high school, he's a rising senior. I have a student that's out of district, but I'm here to speak about something where I don't have a student. And I think it's important to note that. I'm here and, but before I do that, I want to say something about the Hays classroom size. When Hays was made a RISE program, we were told that the classroom sizes would remain small because of the impact on RISE students and their needs. That is clearly not the case and it shouldn't be that way. So that's, now I'm going to speak about what I came here to speak for. I'm here to shine a light on inequitable salaries for PSB, DESI mandated programs for ESY. ESY is Extended School Year. Equitable pay for all the employees regardless of their role is crucial. The Extended School Year program is essential to hiring and retaining skilled and experienced employees for our most vulnerable, most complex public school of Brookline students. Certainly, it's also essential to the well-being of these students or special educators, specialists, and the ESY administration. In 2019, the community petitioned the school committee due to pay inequities. At that time, some specialists and special educators were compensated at their per diem rate. Others were not. This was supposed to be addressed but continues to be a huge issue for ESY 2024. Unfortunately, this year, for unknown reasons, HR has reverted back to the pre-2019 pay structure. Though not reflected in their pay, the job for ESY administrators begins in February. For our ESY coordinators, there is no equity or appropriate compensation for those committed to the program for multiple years. For the past two years, some coordinators' work was compensated through a grant. However, the grant was not awarded and coordinators are in fact making less than they made in the past two years. It has also come to my attention that coordinators of the STAR Academy program, a three-week supplemental summer program for a small cohort of students, are earning significantly more than the staff who run the six-week intensive federally mandated Essential ESY program. It has been reported that the director of the STAR Academy is making $18,000 over three weeks, the assistant director $10,000, and team leader $5,000 plus prep time. Another supplemental program, Project Discovery's assistant director, is reportedly making $7,050. And BHS summer program coordinators each make $12,500 for a one-month program. The mandated ESY coordinators are only making $7,500 over six weeks. Not only are ESY coordinators, specialists, and some educators making less than they have made the past two years, they get no prep, no overtime when something goes awry, and no planning time. This includes no funds for coordinators that run orientations, do scheduling, make class lists, arrange buses, and specialist lists. This is not only outrageous, it makes ESY, which is already difficult to hire for, that much less appealing to our special education leaders, specialists, and educators. Coordinators want to hire the most qualified candidates for our most vulnerable students. However, these factors make their job nearly impossible. I must remind you all, these are the same specialists, coordinators, and educators that were first to return and provide in-person services and education in PPE throughout COVID while others were safely at home. It is so disheartening that these essential and dedicated PSB employees continue to fight for pay equity. It certainly sends a painful message. How unvalued must these extraordinary PSB employees feel learning they are receiving significantly less than their peers? How is this acceptable? What can be done to ensure that we do not lose these valuable key players in ESY? Our students in special education require ESY in order to be successful. The individuals in special education who dedicate their summer to our students must be appropriately compensated. They must be paid a salary that is at very least equitable to their peers. You can imagine the feelings of disrespect felt by coordinators, educators, and specialists running our most intensive mandated programs, yet they continue to be compensated less. I remind you again, ESY is mandated by the state. Despite the fact that these educators do ESY because of their commitment to this complex community, they deserve equitable pay. In order to ensure the ESY administration and all ESY teachers, staff, and specialists continue efforts in this huge amount of work required to meaningfully coordinate these programs, I ask you to confirm a commitment to all ESY employees for equitable remuneration. I worry that our most disabled and complex students and their educators and specialists have lesser value to this administration and that is unacceptable. Thank you in advance for your prompt attention in finding the means to equitably pay these essential employees this year and in future years for this mandated Essential program and for ensuring they are given the respect and equity that they deserve in these most demanding roles.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dantowitz. That concludes public comment for tonight. Next up, we have an update on the budget situation for the current fiscal year FY2024 and options to close the budget gap.
Do we want to switch?
Dr. Guillory or Mariah?
Hold on. We want to switch so that SCL goes first so that they, because they don't have to stay that way that late.
You want to switch the, switch SCL and let them go first?
If you're agreeable to that.
Yeah.
All right. So let's in fact move on to the SCL presentation and then we'll, yes, if everybody is ready and wants to do it now rather than later. Sure.
All right. social emotional learning in school. Lisa and Matt, take it away.
Well, thank you for the privilege of your time this evening. It's my honor to serve the Public Schools of Brookline, but even more of an honor to highlight the work of Dr. Dubois, who you'll be hearing from this evening. Dr. Dubois is our Senior Director of Social Emotional Learning and Clinical Services and the presentation is our second annual report addressing social emotional learning in our schools. Dr. Dubois's vision, energy, and leadership cannot be underestimated. As a precursor to our annual report, I wanted to begin by anchoring our mental health work in the district's approved strategic plan. Because strategic planning is an essential process for organizing and preparing to advance any organization's mission, prioritizing social and emotional learning goals and articulating those goals help us identify key opportunities for advancing student social emotional development. Social emotional learning goals are articulated in Goal 3 of our strategic plan, Climate and Culture, and ensuring that OSS and the Office of Teaching and Learning and the Office of Educational Equity and the Office of Administration and Finance are closely interconnected in our work is an essential element of moving our district forward. In addition to the district strategic plan, which serves obviously as a guiding light for our work together, it's important to also mention our district's participation in annual state reporting requirements. These data trends, often interconnected and intertwined, include things like student attendance panels, soon to be discussed by Dr. Dubois, data regarding McKinney-Vento and Foster students, data regarding bullying prevention and intervention, data regarding the use of physical restraint, and other civil rights areas are all shared. In addition, annual reporting to the Department of Public Health is also mandatory, addressing areas such as life-threatening allergies, respiratory illnesses, cancer diagnoses, and more, as you can see on the slide. Submission of data for all of these aforementioned areas fall in the middle of July this year, so we would be happy to come back in the early fall to share trends for all the areas being submitted, if that's an area of interest for the committee. Our partnerships with the community further serves as an opportunity for connectedness, central to our mission for social emotional learning. In this regard, OSS and PSB gives a shout-out appreciating our alliances and partnerships with a large number of community agencies listed on the slide that provide both services and professional development opportunities for family, staff, and students. Thank you. And this slide further highlights PSB's interconnectedness, again, that family, community, school partnership, providing a wide range of parent guardian workshops. And this highlights the ones that we've offered over the course of this year, and I am reflecting all the way back to September, that seems so long ago, with our Youth Risk Behavior Survey presentation, where we had a robust panel discussion that included some of our most involved partners, the Brookline Police Department, Dr. Von Han, our developmental behavioral pediatrician from TOFS, Rachel Hennessy-Crowell, clinical director of the Brookline Center, Sagal Reese, director of our public health, and others. And it just highlights this level of interconnectedness that provides the very best supports and services to our families and to our students. And with that, I will take a pause and leave my introductory comments and bring forward Dr. Matt Dubois. Thank you.
Lisa, before Matt jumps in, I just want to say that I was at the superintendent's roundtable for the tri-county Tuesday and Massachusetts Partners for Youth indicated that Brookline is one of the highest users of their services. So, yeah, exactly. Well done on that.
Awesome. A good evening, a good evening, everyone. Once again, I just want to reiterate what Lisa offered. We are so appreciative of having time this evening to talk about our work. We're really, really proud of it. As we were chatting about this meeting, we As we were chatting about this meeting, we have some really promising data that's really indicating the work that we're doing is impacting students in a really positive way. As we often do in our presentations, we want to anchor this conversation around our overarching goals, around our social emotional learning and mental health programming. And what I really want to stress throughout this presentation, you're going to hear me come back to it a couple of times, is on the bottom there, you sort of see and know about what we're likely to expect if we meet these objectives. And what I want to name is, of course, meeting these objectives are going to help students feel well. That's a really worthy goal. But what I also want to name is that achieving those objectives are really important in advancing all the academic goals that we have for students. And so this work is never meant to be siloed. This work is never been meant to be at the sacrifice of academic learning. So much of the work that we're going to be talking about is meant to advance all the academic goals that we have for students. And talking more specifically about our goals, right, the top bullet is really, really important. We want to make sure that when our kids leave the public schools of Brookline, they have really strong social and emotional skills. There you see the CASL framework. When we talk about social emotional skills, right, that's the framework that we're talking about. We want kids to have a really good understanding of themselves. We want them to know their strengths, their needs, their assets, and to use that to pursue every single goal they have for themselves. We want kids to have really strong self-management skills, right? When, not if, when they're feeling strong unpleasant emotions, we want skills to be available to them to help them navigate that and to continue to work towards their goals. We want kids to have really strong social awareness. We want them to know what other people are thinking and feeling and to adjust their behavior accordingly. We want kids to have strong relationship skills, so they can initiate and maintain really strong relationships with others. And of course, we want kids to be able to make really good decisions, right? So that's what we're talking about when we're talking about strengthening social emotional skills. What's also important, you're going to see, hear me talk about this throughout, is important that we are thinking about our schools as being protective places for kids. We want our schools to be places that are advancing all of our kids' developments, right? And so it's common within child development that we talk about adverse childhood experiences. With gaining increasing attention, literature are things that are called P A C E's, so protective and compensatory experiences. And what we know is that those protective factors have just as much of a meaningful impact on kids' development as do those adverse childhood experiences do, right? And so you'll see that reflected in a lot of the work that we're talking about, belonging, a lot of the work that we're talking about with relationships. And then finally, for kids who have, who demonstrate needs, we want to make sure we have really effective, high-quality care that we can provide them in school and also within the community, right? So as we're going through our work, that's sort of a lens I want you to be thinking about within our goals. Over the past couple of years, we've used the term M T S S quite a bit in these meetings, multi-tiered systems of support, and that is layered throughout our strategic plan. And so as Lisa and I were planning for this presentation and we wanted to describe really concretely what this work looks like in schools, we want to offer this through this lens. And so as a reminder for this group, when we're saying M T S S, right, what we're describing is a prevention-based framework that's came out of public health research. And it's a model that is meant to sort of answer this question, how do we effectively and efficiently prevent problems from occurring? And when problems do manifest, how do we respond to them promptly and effectively? And at the core of M T S S are these really, really important things to understand about most organizations. Resources are not infinite, right? And so within that context, understanding that it usually takes fewer resources to prevent a problem than to respond to one, and also produces better outcomes. And what we know is that when we match the intensity of support to a person's needs, that's what advances outcomes. It's not necessarily always applying the most intensive interventions, it's that match that is really important. And so this pyramid is probably pretty familiar for folks as we talk about M T S S. But there's a couple of key features here that I want to stress, and this is much of how we think about our work. So what's really important with M T S S is that we have really strong data practices, right? Throughout an entire school year, we are collecting universal screening data to understand how kids are progressing, when kids are accessing Tier Two and Tier Three interventions. We have data supports in place to understand how kids are responding to those, and that's really important, because those data are what inform how effective our Tier One support is and sort of help us drive what types of supports our kids are getting at Tier Two and Tier Three. What I also want, and I bolded this, and this is really, really important, is that Tier Two and Tier Three supports are meant to be additive to Tier One. They're never meant to replace that, right? So that is critically, critically important. To give a really granular example, if a child's accessing individual counseling, if they're accessing group therapy at school, we want that to be in addition to all the Tier One experiences that they're receiving in the classroom, not in a replacement of those. And so within Tier One, if we're doing M T S S correctly, this is where the majority of our resources are going to go. This is the first, this is the best instruction that kids receive. And when we use this term Tier One, oftentimes we'll describe it's a universal instruction, right? These are the experiences, these are the instructions that all students receive. And our lens here is that we're providing these experiences because we're pretty confident they're going to promote competencies, they're going to promote positive development, and they're going to prevent challenges from occurring, right? Again, we're applying these to all students independent of need. And what can happen within schools, and this certainly happens within mental health, is that we can't get to a place where we're being more responsive. A common problem within mental health is that we don't become interested in a child's mental health until they're presenting the symptoms of anxiety, or depression, or stress. And so for us, it is critical, if we're looking to achieve the objectives that I outlined there, we must always be interested in all of our kids' mental health, right? That prevention and that promotion lens is critical. And so here, there's a, we're sort of going through and describing what the Tier One work looks like, there's a lot here, and that's on purpose. That's not an accident. And what I really want to emphasize for this group is that when we made the investment to bring in more adjustment counselors and social workers, of course, that resulted in more kids accessing individual and group therapy, but also allowed us to invest more deeply into this work. And this is incredibly, incredibly important, and many of the more positive outcomes that we're observing are because of this prevention and promotion lens that we have within this work. Back in March, when we did the spotlight excellence, we talked a little bit about the whole class S E L work that's happening in our pre-K to five classrooms. And so the curriculum that we use is Second Step, those teaches, those five skills that I outlined at the beginning. Our advisory programming in middle school and high school is specifically designed to promote belonging, build connections, also strengthen social emotional development. It's pretty common in our K to fives for counselors to do rotating small group interventions with kids, and throughout the entirety of a school year, meet with five or six kids at a time, build those connections, build those belonging. Last thing I'll highlight on this slide is what is essential in this work is, of course, we're caring about kids. It's also important that we care about adults. It is really hard, it is maybe impossible, to take care of another person effectively if you're not feeling supported. And so this has definitely been a priority for me this year in thinking about how it is that we're supporting educators in this work. I write a monthly S E L newsletter, and it's been all around adult wellness this year. I held a monthly P L C for educators as well. That was all around building resilience as an educator, sort of the psychology of being an educator, and that's work that we're going to continue into the future. Yeah.
Just a quick clarification. What is the N A N project?
Yeah, with so many bullets there. So the N A N project, they are a group, it's sort of related to signs of suicide, so they do suicide prevention. And so it's a group that comes into our ninth-grade health classes, and they're teaching around suicide prevention with also this lens on how it is that we can have kids access care. Yeah. Yeah.
What do the asterisks mean on the first?
Oh, thank you. Yeah. So things with asterisks are specified, and thank you for that, Mariah, I'm going to make sure I surface that and move forward. So those are all things that are referenced within our strategic plan. Yep. And so, for example, within our strategic plan, we've set a goal for this year of identifying a core curriculum within pre-K through five, and also strengthening our advisory programming with curriculum as well.
That actually is, was a question I had. So is Second Step now in pilot phase or universal adoption in pre-K?
So I think we're moving, as we did a lot of work this year on the evaluation, so we're past the pilot phase and it's full-on implementation.
Okay, so they're all using it this year right now, not just for next year?
They are using it, and so next to, about eighty percent of classrooms are using it this year, and the next year the expectation will be one hundred percent.
Great, thank you.
Yep. All right. So as we are thinking about our Tier One work, it's really important that we have built in very intentionally structures for measuring the impact of that work, right? And so back to that slide we were describing M T S S, we have spent a lot of time, we've invested a lot of time, in thinking about how we are continuously routinely monitoring the impact of these supports. And so our universal screening work, of course, provides individual-level data, and a lot of kids come to access additional support based on that survey, but we also use it from a program evaluation lens, right? And so much of the data I'm going to show today is that thirty thousand-foot view, right? Where we can take a look at a district level, at a school level, how is it that our kids are responding to this? What's nice within the M T S model is that there, within the model, there are some metrics that we can use as indicators if we're sort of effective in our model. And so if you Googled right now "M T S S pyramid," you'd see a pyramid, and you'd see a bunch of percentages that are attached to each of those tiers, right? So for example, you would see Tier One, seventy-five to eighty percent. And what that means is that if we're doing it well, right, we would expect about eighty, up to eighty percent of kids, that all they would need is Tier One alone in order to meet the goals that we have for them. Within Tier Two, typically you're going to see like fifteen to twenty percent, and that we'd be anticipating, even if we're doing everything well at Tier One, we would still expect about fifteen to twenty percent of kids to need more than just Tier One to meet their goals. And that tippy Tier Three, you see usually five to ten percent, and that's where we would sort of predict those are the percentage of kids that needs our most intensive supports. And so as I go through our data, I'd love for you to have that lens of thinking, how close are we getting to that eighty percent number and evaluating the effectiveness? Then how well are we building in those structures for kids to access additional Tier Two and Tier Three supports? And so I've presented in each of these areas before, these are all represented, these top four bullets all represented our universal screening data, experiences of symptoms consistent with mental health diagnoses, those come out of Youth Risk Behavior Survey data that we do every other year. What is sort of newer for us, or maybe we're bringing this back, is measuring staff perceptions of climate and also family perceptions of climate. And so these are routine, that we are always going to have these going on so we can evaluate the impact of our work. All right. So here, we're looking at school belonging. And so this green part of the stacked graph represents the percentage of kids who are endorsing strong school belonging. And I am really proud of this growth that we've seen over time, right? I've said this before, I'll say it again, when we compare our numbers to other schools nationally or to research, it's really favorable. That's never good enough, right? We don't want to be relatively better, right? We have goals that we're achieving for our kids, right? So the number right now is sitting at seventy-two percent of kids are endorsing strong school belonging. In previous school committees, I have described that we do see discrepancies in these data based on race and also based on I E P status. What is really positive is that we have seen that gap close. Where it is most apparent right now is if we isolate middle school students, so in grades six through eight, this gap is around six to seven percent for students, right? And so it's positive that we have made growth in this area, but clearly we still have more work to do. And I just want to surface that so much of the work that Claire and Kristi lead is meant to target this area, is meant to target belonging. And again, what I want to surface here is that walking into a space and believing that you belong feels great, but there's a really important mechanism at place to help support academic learning. School belonging has a really important emotional regulation property to it. When you walk into that space and you feel like you belong, it gets activated your prefrontal cortex. And when we're presenting instruction to children, that's a part of the brain that we want on, right? And so school belonging is so foundational to learning, we can think about it as creating the psychological and really cognitive underpinnings to support learning. And so it's not a coincidence that when we look at a lot of the gaps in school belonging, they mirror, excuse me, they mirror so many of the gaps that we see with our academic outcome data as well. So again, this is a really good example of both and work of helping kids feel really well and also supporting our academic goals.
Matt, I just wanted to make sure I understand this is three to twelve in its entirety, growth over time?
Correct. Yep.
Thanks.
Can I just correct?
Yeah.
Statistically, what is like a variation that you would say is meaningful versus not meaningful in these percentages?
What a great question. So what panorama we'll offer is that anything above three percent is meaningful. I mean, you can do, you know, statistical significance on it, right? Within our strategic plan, our goals are to eliminate it completely, and so that's our framework, is to eliminate it completely. Yeah.
Can I just make a comment?
Yeah.
I think it's pretty amazing to go up thirty percent in four years.
Yeah. It is.
That is, yes, the pandemic was there and all that part, but to go up thirty percent, I don't know.
We should, it's a huge celebration. And I would say, in just building off of this, right, here we look at our safe adult data. The beautiful thing, the beautiful thing about children is that just our mere proximity to them does not mean they're going to define us as a safe adult. We have to earn this every single day, right? So this work that we have done, right, is not just, okay, you know, things have settled down, we have committed to this work. And you know, what I'm really proud of, when we go into most conversations around students, they're talking about their belonging. They're talking about, do they have an adult at school, right? This is the most common conversation that we're having around kids, right? And so it's not an accident that we're seeing data move in this way. So here, we're right around eighty percent of kids in grades three through twelve who can identify a safe adult. Historically, we haven't seen discrepancies in these data, where we've seen them sort of here based on race, based on I E P status. We have them, observe them here. And what I'll comment, I think this is a really good indicator of how effective so many of our support programs are. So for example, in the past, it wasn't uncommon for us to find, for example, students who participate in MECO or in STEPS endorsing low school belonging, but having a safe adult in that program who they can go to, right? And so for us, we want both of those to be in place. Yeah, if things are really hard, we want you to know, yep, I know exactly who I can go to. And as you move throughout your entire school day, we want to make sure that you belong to every single one of your learning spaces. All right. So here, you're looking at emotional regulation data. And so here, and I don't, I didn't write three through twelve, this represents grades three through twelve. And here, kids are asked, can you accurately identify what you're feeling? Do you know why you're feeling what you're feeling? When you're feeling a big thing, can you use a skill to navigate it so you can keep on working toward your goals? And here, we're seeing eighty percent of students are endorsing strong social emotional regulation skills. And what I want to sort of draw your attention to is, starting in fall 2022, we see this really meaningful increase. And this is paired with us really increasing the amount of explicit S E L instruction that kids are receiving within the classroom, right? And so from that program evaluation lens, as we're rolling something out, like Second Step, we would hope, we would theorize that we would see increases in this area, and that's what we're observing. Again, what I want to name here is that this, again, helps kids regulate their emotions, helps them feel well. For us, and we talk about this often, it is so important for child development that we have really, really high expectations for kids. Rigor is incredibly, incredibly important, but the thing about high expectations is they commonly elicit unpleasant emotions, like stress and frustration. So we want kids to have available to them skills to navigate those experiences, right? If they're trying a math problem and it's frustrating, we don't want them to quit, we want them to keep on going. If they worked really hard on a paper and they got feedback that they felt wasn't great, we want them to internalize it and to keep on working, right? And so it's not a surprise where really strong emotional regulation skills are predictive of success, just about in any industry, in any sort of academic setting that you're in, because it allows you to keep on working when things are getting hard, right? And so again, this is really, really positive. And again, we're thinking deeply about, you know, for kids who are not yet there, the supports that we're providing them. And then within the survey, we asked kids over the past two weeks, how often have you felt a variety of emotions, right? And within that, we are deeply interested in kids' experiences of more pleasant emotions, right? So we asked kids in the past two weeks, how often have you been hopeful, and how often have you felt excited? This graph, there's a lot here, but I'll sort of, I'll draw your attention to the bottom of the graph, the red and orange. And so those are the kids that are almost never, or only once in a while, feeling hopeful, and on the other graph, feeling excited, right? So we really want kids to be sitting in that blue and green space. Hope is one of the most important things that we want for human beings. Hope is this comment about the future, and what we want for kids is for, if a thing does feel hard right now, to have hope that it's going to be better in the future. Excitement is more of a comment of sort of what's going on right now for you, and of course, we want kids to be excited and to be hopeful. And a comment on just the resilience of our kids, these data have been pretty consistent across time, right? There hasn't been a ton of shifts here, even as things have gotten really, really, really hard. And so that's important. But again, it's really common when kids are describing infrequent possibilities, that also being a pathway to care both at school and outside of school. And on the inverse of that, here, you're seeing frequency.
Yeah, I had a question on the prior slide then. So do you see the, when I looked at it earlier today, and thank you for providing this in advance, so I can... the end, so I could look at it early. Is that an outlier?
It is, yeah. Thanks for that. Just see, and I don't know how to explain that. You know, and in preparation, these slides, I sort of double checked, was like, was there a coding issue? I'm not sure what's up with that. So this is a nice, where we have sort of trend data, where we can say, okay, sometimes there's a thing that we sort of can't quite explain, but yeah, but outside of that one sort of in the winter, this.
Maybe it was the Patriots season.
Maybe it was a rough season. Although there's more, more hope now, though. All right, so then looking at loneliness and worrying, again, I'll draw your attention to the bottom of the graph. And so those are kids who are reporting to almost always or frequently feeling lonely or feeling worried. For us, you know, a very, you know, not concerning human experiences is sometimes experiencing those things. Obviously, we would, you know, maybe as our kids only have those once in a while. But when you look at the trend across time, we have seen fewer kids reporting to almost always or frequently feeling those experiences, right? The chronicity of that experience is what can really impact kids' functioning, right? And so it's great that it's declined across time. And I would say, as our clinical teams are incredibly seasoned at combing through the data after every single round, and again, when kids are reporting, hey, I'm almost always feeling worried, if there are any other sort of markers to indicate that they might need additional support, that's a really common way they come to access additional supports at school.
What questions do you ask for the frequency of worry?
In the past two weeks, how frequently have you felt worried?
That's it?
That's it. And then you say almost always, frequently, sometimes, yeah.
And they, they determine if it's one time, it could be frequent or.
Yeah, so it's a little, it's, it's meant to be subjective, so you sort of, you know, from a survey design, you sort of bring into it what it is. There's not like, you know, most times and not is sometimes or every day, it's sort of just that, that broad. Yeah. And for us, you know, one thing, and we can have a very long discussion around survey designs, sort of how it goes into it, but one thing I'll name is that the, the way that we're phrasing the questions is just remain constant, right? So even if it's not the perfect question, we are seeing response to the same question across time. Yeah. Yeah, so what I want to say here, so these data sort of mirror some of what we observed with the youth risk behavior survey data that we presented back in October, I think it was. And so these are data we collected last spring. And so students at the high school were asked in the, in the past year, have you had a period of two weeks where you persistently felt sad or hopeless? It's a really intense question. 20% is still a very big number, even though it is relatively lower. That's, again, that's not good enough. Now, the trend there is positive, that's lower than what we observed in a while. And so our hope is that when we re-administered the survey in the spring, we'll see that number continue to decrease. The next slide, I'm going to show, yeah, please.
Why is the reporting frequency only ever two to four years on this one compared to the other one?
We don't, so this is meant to be, we don't have 2019 data. Part of that was because it was going to be in, I believe it was going to happen in the spring of 2020, and then.
Oh, those are school year.
Those are school years, yeah.
School year.
Yeah.
But school year 2020.
Yeah, so there's a thing, yeah, so I don't, we just, when I was going through, we just don't have 2019 available. Part of that also is, and we're strengthening, is there have been years where the Department of Public Health has administered it, the many years that were we've administered it. And so moving forward, this could be a very close partnership, so we're going to have really accurate data from you every other year. Yeah. All right, so this next slide is a really intense slide. It's a heavy subject. So here, kids were asked in the past year, have you seriously considered suicide? We want that number to be 0%. The wholefulness with it is that this is the lowest number that we've observed in a decade. When I talked in October, we talked a lot about the impact of belonging, the impact on relationships on this number. And so our hope is, and when we administer next spring, we'll continue to see a decline in this area. And so in sort of summarizing all that, right, this is, you know, Lisa and I were really excited to be up here and to talk about this, right? There is still a lot of work to be done, and we have evidence that a lot of our commitment, a lot of our investment is having a really positive impact on kids. And so I, I think it's come up in a couple of other school committing meetings. So what we have going on right now is we're assessing families' perceptions of climate and culture. The survey's not closed yet, we have about 800 responses, actually, I think I checked right before we came in, it's 810 responses. And so here, what we're seeing so far, now, we're going to leave that open for the remainder of, of the school year. And I imagine we'll come back in the fall and we'll do a more in-depth analysis of what this looks like. Our staff survey is still being administered right now as well, so we don't have preliminary data yet, but I imagine within that presentation, we'll present on that as well. And both of these surveys are within our strategic plan. We have targets that we're looking towards for family and staff perceptions of climate. So this will be work that we'll talk about quite often over the next couple of years.
What is the total N of families in the district?
It's, it's around 4,000.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
So this is, 800 is.
I mean, it's, you know, when I, when I talk with my public health colleagues, they're jealous.
Yeah.
They're jealous of the number.
Over 15% is really.
Yeah, yeah. Again, I want, I'm a little greedy, so I'd like to get a little bit higher. Part of what we want to look at too is making sure that, that our respondents are reflective of the larger community, right, so we can generalize. So we'll, we'll break that down once we, once we close the survey.
Matt, can I, can I ask you a general question about tier one indicators?
Yeah.
When you're looking at the tier one indicators, are you looking, kind of just a question about how you read them? Are you reading them primarily comparatively? Are you reading them as screeners? Are you reading them as kind of a, a general diagnostic of emotional health? Are you doing all of these things? I, I guess I'm listening to this with curiosity, but a little bit of uncertainty about what the best way to absorb this information is.
And it's a lot of information. So yeah, so Stephen, I would say a little bit of each of these, right? Some of these, you might think about them as sort of a temperature check of overall how you're doing. Some of them are certainly more, have more of a program evaluation place of it. So for example, think about when we're, as we're rolling out curriculum, we're going to want to see from a theoretical lens, increases in emotional regulation, right? And so some of these.
Do you feel some confidence in the correlation between some of the SCL?
As much as we can, yeah. So you know, nothing that I would feel confident publishing, right? But in sort of like creating out a theory of change in advance, of sort of thinking, okay, here's what we have going on right now, and this is one specific thing that we're adding, and now let's measure sort of the change on that. That's where we can have some, some confidence in that.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
Yeah.
And sorry, I have a question about the slide that you were on, the family perceptions. Oh, and on the family responses overall.
Yeah.
I just don't remember, although I have kids in the school. So when I get this as a parent, am I answering for the experience of one child and then another and then another? Or am I just answering one?
So you, so there are, it's, it's mostly about your experiences as a parent and guardian. There are a couple of questions asked you, what do you think your kid is experiencing at school? For guardians who have more than one child, you can either collectively describe your experience, or you could do three different surveys for each of your experiences at, at schools.
Okay.
Your children, yep.
And then, so this is fantastic and fascinating. I could come back to this, but I'm just going to say, the question about whether your children's school is welcoming, as a parent, I'm always confused by that question, because I don't know if that means like emotionally welcoming or physically welcoming, like there are opportunities for me to participate, and that's really different level of appropriateness, depending on whether my child is in first grade or 11th grade. So like my expectation is not that I get to go on field trips in 11th grade, so.
Yeah.
And I say that with total respect, like this is awesome, you're awesome. I'm just putting that out there that.
Yeah, and I'll say some of it is meant to be a little broad. So again, you're sort of like bringing into it. And what we, we tried to do, and we're always open to feedback, is there are a lot of opportunities for open responses. And so if you want to describe, yeah, emotionally, but maybe physically, I don't feel welcomed, you can sort of describe that within the survey. Yeah. All right. So I know this is a topic that we are deeply interested around attendance. And so for us, to just sort of, you know, set the stage here, the reason why we're so interested in attendance is that we believe deeply that we are creating and offering experiences at school that kids cannot replicate outside of school. You see there a chronic absenteeism number, right? So that is a DESI statistic, and it describes what it means to be chronically absent, is that you've missed 10% or more of school days in which you're enrolled. Doesn't matter if it's excused or unexcused, those are collapsed, right? And we know from research that when you miss more than 10% of schools, that's what impacts your academic, your cognitive, your social, your emotional development. And that makes sense, because you're accessing really unique experiences at school that impact each of those domains, right? And what we see every single day, we do beautiful work with children when they're in our care. What's harder is when kids are not with us every single day. What I also want to draw your attention to, sometimes we have this, this narrative that attendance was great before the pandemic, and then the pandemic hit, and then it wasn't great, right? There was an increasing trend of chronic absenteeism before the pandemic, right? We were increasingly talking about it, concerned about it, and then of course, the pandemic worsened it. So in looking at school year 21, 22, our number was at 15.1%. That year, DESI actually created an additional chronic absenteeism statistic, so they looked at students who missed 20% or more of school days. Last year, our number was 14 and a half percent for the chronic absenteeism number and 2.6% for the 20% statistic. When I presented in March, I was really hopeful about where we were trending, we were at 11.1%. As of this morning, we were at 9.2%. Now, what I do want to offer is there is some volatility in these data. So right now, if you're a student who's been absent seven to 180 days in a school year, if you've been absent 17 days, you're not chronically absent. If you miss one more day of school, now you're chronically absent, right? So I'm hopeful we'll have strong attendance. It's really small, but this graph here looks at chronic absenteeism rate by month. You see a peak, cold and flu season, and now, as we sort of hoped in March, it's really gone down significantly during the warmer months. And so we have a lot of exciting things planned for the last weeks of school, and so we hope kids are, are there every single day.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can you just remind me how a day is counted in the high school?
How, oh, so, yep. So you, the, the, you have to be present for at least half the school day in order to be marked up, present. So if you miss more than half the classes in which you're enrolled, you're marked absent for the day.
Got it, thank you.
So a couple of questions, or one comment and a question. Thank you for including the pre-K and K.
Yeah.
Because I think it does somewhat skew the.
And we did that, and that was a great recommendation. We did that because, for those watching, so pre-K and K are not mandatory in terms of attendance, right? Also, having a kindergartner, they get sick a lot, that's part of it, right? So in terms of mandatory attendance, yeah, that's that number.
I forgot the second question, go ahead.
Yeah, so again, so this is.
So you're just pulling it out three times just to show the trend more than anything else, right?
Exactly, exactly.
We'll have the end of the year.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have the, have the end of the year, right? And again, so we can do two things at, at once, right? We can celebrate this trend, and it's not nearly good enough, right? We're not satisfied with almost 10% of kids missing 10% of school, right? And so it's a comment that the things that we're doing, and we are doing a lot of work in this, and in March, I talked a little bit about what that work looks like, right? So it's positive, and of course, there's a lot more work to do.
One question, I know, one thing that could possibly skew this, and I don't know if there's a way of even looking for it, but there are parents who will take their kids out for a week and go on vacation.
That's very true, that's very true.
Or, or more, and then the kid might get sick a few times, and then you're up to.
For sure.
Whatever the days are there. There's no way of pulling that out of here?
No, you know, and that's, part of it is a recording thing, and so we are working to record that consistently across schools, right? That is a choice, you know, that obviously parents could make it, don't want to offer. Attendance that way. So we're working, there's slightly, exactly, and there's slightly different practices.
So we do have ways of, of finding that out. Because I was in fact going to ask pretty much the same question, but maybe, maybe more broadly, right? Like of the various.
Pretty common.
Of the various reasons why you might be chronically absent, mental health, physical health, having to work all the time to support your family, or getting pulled out for vacations, do we have any way of really knowing that?
Yeah, and so part of that, so when you look at the data a little bit versus the excused or unexcused, and there's an absence that is sort of listed, what is, what's a little bit harder to represent here, but in lived practice, right? When kids are missing school, our teams are really, really good at figuring out, so what's going on there, right? And so qualitatively, we're able to differentiate, okay, they left for two weeks because they're going on a ski vacation versus a kid really struggling at home, right? So that obviously informs differently how we're responding to students within that. From a data, what it is, I'm showing this is from Open Architects, I know I described that back in March during a curriculum subcommittee meeting. We are able to look at high absence days, right? So a couple of weeks leading into vacations tend to be pretty poor attendance, right? So we can make a hypothesis there. But again, for us, we want to be practiced of treating all absences as being worthy to pay attention to, right? Going to school matters, it does. And vacations matter too, and there's a lot of learning there, and I don't want to put a value statement on that, but we believe deeply in, in attending school whenever you can. Yeah. Jesse?
Yeah, two questions. I guess one is, that 9.2 could be like amazing. So my question is, nationally, across districts, I understand that you're saying, we want nothing, we want it down low. That's very aspirational, obviously, because it's not reality. But what nationally across school districts, similar to say Brookline, would a number be for a target? Would it be six, would it be four, would it be eight?
So for me, and this is where we can bring in MTSS, for me, I would, I would think about chronic absenteeism as being a tier three challenge, right? Again, we could be doing everything right, and kids are going to have mental health needs, things are going to happen, right? And so for me, a number that's between 3 to 5% is probably like, like a ceiling that we would hit. So good, we're approaching that way. Again, I think if we compare this to other school districts, we can be really proud of it. And we don't want to be like, okay, we can just like move on now. Of course, there's more work there.
Thank you. And the second question, which doesn't relate as much to students being absent, is, do we do anything to look at this in terms of faculty absenteeism? In other words, kids going through the school where often certain teacher, say in a grade, is just absent for, they get sick a lot, or they are away or something, and there's this constant stream of different subs, and how does that affect their academic performance as well as their social emotional environment?
Yeah, I don't have any data to look at staff attendance, but I can imagine, right, how that can be impactful, yeah. Yeah.
So should we be looking at 10% as chronic absenteeism?
So 10%, so this is, so this.
I understand the state.
Yeah, so 10% means that as an individual, as a person, right? So Matt, right, I have missed 10% of school days, right? So this is 9, 9.2% of our students have missed at least 10% of school days.
I see.
Yeah. And then here is 1.6% of kids have missed.
20%.
Exactly, exactly, exactly. Yeah.
And do you have that not here broken down by grade, school?
So for, yeah, so what is really nice about Open Architects is we have very, yeah, So for, yeah, so what is really nice about Open Architects is we have very, yeah, so I know every single grade level, every single school, any demographic variable you could imagine, we have that broken down too. DESI does a little bit of that, right, and then it's all public information. So if we go to the attendance reports, you can see that broken down. But we have even more granularity now with our partnership with Open Architects. Yeah, yeah. All right. The second half will be a little bit briefer. So it's really important for us that we have really good, what we call tier two supports, right? Sometimes you may hear those described as secondary supports, but what we're really describing here are students who have demonstrated a very specific need. For example, kids who are presenting with anxiety, or a lack of belonging, or have a safe adult, right? And so a term that gets thrown out a lot, or it's, the tier two supports are meant to be targeted. So they're meant to be very specific to the challenge that the person is experiencing, right? And we really want to sort of build in capacity where during the course of a school year, about 15% of kids could access those types of supports. Our framing lens here, and again, this is where we're pulling out of public health, is we want to address problems as quick as possible, as early as possible. One of the most insidious parts of mental health care that, on average, it takes a decade for a person to access care after presenting with symptoms. That's unacceptable, right? We can't be moving that way, right? And so for us, thinking deeply about how is it that we can connect kids to care as quickly as possible at school and within the community is really, really important. And so the most common way that it looks like in schools are small group interventions, so five, six kids coming together to work on a very specific skill, like anxiety management or social skills, or belonging is another really common area for that. Here, Lisa talked about some of our community-based partners, and so Cartwheel and Carisolus are two newer ones, and that's what allows us to get kids into care within a couple of weeks. And so we're really proud of those relationships. And I believe that we have, we're creating a model where just about anybody in our community who requires mental health care can access that in a pretty rapid way. All right. And so then work that I'm doing with clinical teams is ask kids who are accessing tier two supports, what do those progress monitoring practices look like? And so you see here, there's a tool that we built out. These links are all links to very specific progress monitoring tools that people can use that are matched to whatever the goals of that intervention is, and sort of getting that practice of embedding that into your clinical work with kids, so that any given time, you're able to comment, is this working? And if so, let's keep on doing it. Are you reaching your goals? In which case, potentially, we can terminate that intervention. Or if it's not working, making sure that we're adjusting our practice in a really thoughtful way.
Yeah. Sorry, is this an individual level reporting, or is this population level reporting?
So this would be for individual or individual or smart group? Yep. So this would be, for example, say, you're meeting with a student for a six-week one-on-one intervention, right? That you would then be during those six weeks, for example, giving them a five-item scale, measuring anxiety, and seeing how that responds to that support.
So on the left-hand side, is, because I can't read it, so I'm asking for a little bit of interpretation, is that like 12, 15 data collection?
Yeah, so this is like an example, for example, of, this is not real data, but this would be, for example, a student accessing a support. We have 10 weeks of data here, and this is where we'd be able to comment, at the end of 10 weeks, we've seen meaningful progress, and that's indicative of this tier two support having worked. Let's say, for example, we saw a trend, a decreasing trend here, we would say, okay, this didn't work. Do we need entirely different tier two support, or do we need a more intensive intervention, right? And so a really important part of mental health work is that we're not just, it's not just qualitative impressions of, I think they're doing better, that we're able to directly comment on how effective that support has been.
I guess my question was, are you collecting that much data on a weekly basis about-
A lot of our providers are, yep. And again, so like you make, so for example, it's uncommon where you might start with three questions at the beginning of a counseling session, and that's the tool. Yeah. All right. Then moving into our tier three supports. So there are most intensive supports that we're offering children. And it's commonly when we think about mental health interventions that we immediately jump to tier three supports, right? And so most classically, that's one-on-one counseling between a clinician and a student. I'm trained as a psychologist. I believe deeply in the power of therapy, and it's not always the right intervention for kids, right? And so again, we want to be matching needs to what the intervention is, right? And I would say too, is all of our clinicians are trained and are definitely wanting to provide tier three supports to kids who need them, but if we're just doing tier three work, then we don't have time for our tier one and tier two work, right? And so we're thinking deeply about, again, having kids have rapid access to care both at school and outside of school. What's common when I was thinking about individual counseling with kids, our group is increasingly thinking about not only that direct service delivery, but also indirect service delivery, so how it is that we are coaching and collaborating, working really closely with guardians, working really closely with educators. What I'll say often is, if we're just providing counseling to a student and we're changing nothing about their environment, probably not going to be effective, right? When we're thinking deeply about their environment and that skill building, that's what produces better outcomes for children. Within this, it's really common when kids are struggling with mental health challenges to be presented to child study team. Me and Michelle Herman are working really closely with those teams to strengthen that process. Another area we should be really proud of is our special education therapeutic programming is really, really robust. We have a lot of programs at the high school. In our elementary schools, we've historically had TLC at FRR. We're really excited about the middle school Winter Pouse program, and for us, we know that it's always better when we can support kids in district. And so I'm really proud and I'm really excited that we're going to be able to support more kids next year. All right, and so for us, yeah.
You didn't include Bright in that.
That's great, yeah. So this was, here, I was thinking a little bit of special education program, that's a great example of a tier three support.
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely. So when we're thinking about measuring the impact here, right, so a lot of this is at the individual level, right, and thinking about our kids who are accessing our most intensive supports, right? How well are they engaging in school? How often are they attending school? How often are they forming really meaningful protective relationships? How well are they able to pursue every single goal that they have for themselves, right? And so a lot of these indicators are at the individual level. One thing that I didn't say, but I think it's actually important to highlight here, all of special education, typically, we're thinking about that as being tier three, but not all tier three is special education, right? We have thought really intentionally of making sure we have really robust mental health supports available through general education, right? And so we never want to position a team or family to think, oh, you can only access intensive care if we have an IP. That's not the case, right? And so we're thinking really thoughtfully about making sure that's all available through general education as well. All right, so a lot of this, we've already talked about. We just wanted to end here in sort of naming some additional things that we have going on here. I think we've touched upon each of these. One thing I'll surface here is, part of our work with kids is, and we use this term a lot, but it's really important, the idea of culturally affirming care, right? That we want to make sure that the kids and the families that we're working with, right, can receive the care in the ways that they need to, right? And so based on the events in this year, we've had some targeted PD in this area for clinicians. And so we worked really closely with JCRC around providing care to Israeli and Hebrew students. We recently had a PD that was focused around supporting Arab and Muslim students, right? And that's ongoing work that we're doing. I'm thinking sort of broadly how it's culturally affirming, but I wanted to surface that here. All right, a couple of things, also sort of forecasting for next year. So updates to Title IX are going to be effective August 1st. Within that, there are additional protections for sex-based discrimination, particularly for people who are LGBTQ+, and so OSS will work really closely with schools to make sure that we're implementing those adjustments. And then finally, again, I serviced it. Michelle Herman and I presented in March on Open Architects. We're really excited about that work. It presents data in this really effective way that supports problem definition and sort of thinking about what kids need for intervention. As a quick example of this, right now, we're doing a lot of eighth and ninth grade transition work, where ninth grade teams go into elementary schools and say, hey, let's talk about students. We have a platform that we built specifically for that, where we can really identify which kids are going to need more support as soon as we start this school year. All right, so that was a ton. I know I answered questions throughout, but any additional questions?
Yeah, thank you, Matt, for the excellent presentation and for the very hopeful work that you've been describing, and for feeling so many questions on the fly. So do committee members have any questions that didn't already get asked? So I think Jesse spoke up first.
Oh, yeah. Another question, just a comment. Thank you very much. This was really great. Thanks.
Mariah?
Yeah, ditto on that, Matt. I feel, how long, when did you join the district? When was that?
I've been in the district for nine years, been in this position for three years.
Okay, that's what I thought. And I feel like the consistency and rigor, and I don't know who did this before, so I'll just say that my experience with your level of consistency and rigor is like absolutely wonderful, and I really appreciate being able to really, even like looking back in history, but also the presentations themselves, like every time you come are really consistent, and it's like very helpful to see that and get it reinforced. So thank you for that. That's wonderful. I have a couple of questions. Four. I had five, but I didn't finish writing it down, and now I have no idea what I was talking about. So one of the things you mentioned earlier was that MTSS requires strong data. And I guess my question is, do you think we have strong data now? How would you rate our data?
I think we're moving there.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think, and that's both on the academic side and the mental health side, I think we are. And so I know folks have seen presentations with M-Class, we're moving to have more universal screening with literacy and with math. We're way more conversations with attendance, so I think we're getting there.
Okay. Because I would say that like, as a parent, my experience with measurements of academic progress-
Sure.
-is erratic. M-Class is like the only spot which is showing data that's longitudinal, any kind of data, but it's longitudinal as well, so.
Yeah, and let's say, I think what I have certainly observed is definitely a mindset shift, right, where people are increasingly appreciating the power of it. Now, again, now what those data are and how it is that we're using, right, there's obviously still work there, but I think we're moving there.
Okay, thanks. One of the things you also mentioned was thinking about tier two and three as additive and not taking away from tier one.
Yeah.
And my question is, given the sort of constrained aspects of our school day, how does one deliver tier two and tier three without taking away from-
Not easy.
Okay. Is it really happening, though? Or is it aspirational?
No, 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 I think-
Because we hear about all the time, for example, you know, people not being able to attend world language in middle school because they're doing, you know, so I guess I'm just-
Yeah, yeah, sure, there are absolute limitations to that. And so some of it is theoretical and aspirational. But I think as we're building out schedules, as we're thinking about when kids come to access support, that should be a lens that we're thinking about. So of course, I'm sure it happens, but when we're, oftentimes when we're thinking about the function of intervention, we want to close a gap.
Yeah.
Right? And so if we're just replacing one thing for another thing, that's not maybe going to function, right, to-
Or creates another gap, right? I mean-
Right, yep.
I guess, I'm really excited about thinking about this as we think about whatever needs to happen with our school day to accommodate all the things we need to accommodate that we're building in time, because every kid can benefit from something in those kinds of supports. So to whatever extent we're able to, big picture, in our next day length, whatever that is, really think about that.
And on that, Mariah, one of the things with the work that OTL is doing with the rest of the administrative team in terms of looking at the school day and looking at schedules, I know the folks are talking about how to build intervention opportunities in there while we also work on the part that you talked about in terms of what we may do with the school day as well. So we don't have to wait until we get to that point. I think at the middle school level, we're looking at that as well as the process that we're going to use to review school schedules as they're being constructed next year as well.
Thanks. And I think, I mean, but that work has been focused on the middle school, right? And there's a lot to do still at the high school to make sure we're accommodating people there. My third question is, the dashboards that you showed us are the, like, as I understand it, we are going to have dashboards that support the strategic plan so that we know whether or not we're achieving or going, trending towards our goals for the strategic plan. Are the dashboards that you're working on specifically tied to the asterisked things in the, I don't know if I said that right, aster, whatever, asterisked things that were in the slides? And then more generally, Linus, are we building all of our dashboards in Open Architects that support the strategic plan? That's a twofer, half for Matt and half for you.
Yeah. So yeah, so what I would offer is many of the things that we are measuring within our strategic plan, there's a dashboard for that. We do not, but it's interesting, we don't have a specific dashboard that's just strategic plan, where you can look at all those, but that's interesting.
I would really like that. Can I advocate that we like publish a thing called Dashboard for Strategic Plan, or by, chunked out by the four areas, so that we can look and see the progress? It would be nice. Can we do that, please? I thought we were doing that. I think we wrote in our budget guidelines that there was going to be dashboards. Okay. Okay, okay. If you've got a surprise, that's great. Okay. But yours are built in, all of them are, you have dashboards for the three asterisked areas.
Yeah, they look at attendance, yep.
Okay. And then my last question, I think, is for Lisa, and it's about at the beginning, when you were presenting on OSS annual reporting, and a lot of that reporting looks to be reporting that we've been talking about with OEE, but we haven't seen reports as far as I know. And I guess I'm wondering where those reports are available and if we can see those reports, because I don't, are we getting those reports on harassment and bullying and discrimination and et cetera that are required for DESI to be, if you're sending them to DESI, I think it would be great if we could see them too. And I don't think we've been given them, and I don't know where to look for them, so.
Thank you, Matt. You do receive the annual report, and you will receive it when we send it in, in July.
Okay.
And then I'd be happy to come back in the fall and sort of map out the trends, because we are tracking them.
Is that the report that Maria sent to us?
Yes.
Okay, so maybe I thought it was an internal report and didn't realize everything that was going on. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll have questions for Matt. Carolyn?
Thanks, Matt. So hi, I'm Carolyn, a new member. That was awesome. So much information. So thank you so much. So is there a way for, is the tool that you use like readily available or accessible? I'm just curious to sort of-
Yeah, absolutely, yep.
Like if I-
Yeah, if you go to our website-
Okay.
And then look under Guidance and Clinical Services.
Yep.
There's open access. You can see every single question there.
Cool, thank you. And you were mentioning different programs, including Winter Pouse, which were expanding. I'm friendly with a couple of people who work there. Just throwing it out there, I think it would be really interesting if it hasn't been done before to, and if time ever allows, to like have presentations from some of those providers, like the Winter Pouse staff, because I think they do amazing work, and I would love to hear from them. So just throwing that out there. And you mentioned that you also survey staff about their perceptions, but I don't think that was in there. And I'm just wondering how aligned staff perceptions of this stuff tends to be with the data that you have.
We will see.
Oh, because you don't have that back yet?
Yep, so it's being like, as we are speaking, people are completing it, and so we'll have those in the fall.
Okay.
Well, we'll have it over the summer, but I'm sure I'll present on it in the fall.
And then, just, this is sort of a comment, kind of goes without saying, but I'll just have to say it. Middle school, obviously, always tough. And I noted that some of your gaps-
Yep.
-were bigger than we want them to be in middle school. So just a general plug, district-wide, you know, I think wherever we can add sports, clubs, academic rigor, and ways for kids to engage with each other and engage with school, if we had all the money in the world and all the space in the world, I think those kinds of engagements are really helpful at that age, which you know. So thank you so much. That was great.
All right, seeing no other raised hands, thank you very much, Matt.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa. Before you go, Lisa, I was wondering if we could pull you up for a quick question about Circuit Breaker, because this will be part of our next agenda item when we'll need to discuss the use of Circuit Breaker funds. I was wondering if you could just give a quick primer on sort of what Circuit Breaker is and what are sort of the accepted best practices in how we use that money, like the sort of three-year cycle?
Would it be helpful if I could sit and listen and step in?
Oh, sure. Yeah, if you're planning to stay for the next agenda item, then that would be great. Okay, excellent. So we can move on to FY24 financial report and options to close the budget gap.
So, Linus, if it's okay with you, I'll just summarize what we did at finance on Monday, and then we can take the vote. Okay. So on Monday, Finance Subcommittee met, and we reviewed the gap, which in the middle of May, the budget deficit was projected to be around $1.7 million and change. Since then, staff has worked very hard to, in a variety of manners, close that deficit significantly, and it was just over $700,000 when we met on Monday. In addition to that, there was a, there is a, the Circuit Breaker account was, it looks like, put in, the account was projection, the account projection was put in at the FY23 amount instead of the FY24 amount, which was about a $300,000 difference. And so the, when that number is corrected, it actually reduces the $700,000 amount to just under $400,000, to like $399,000 and change.
So to clarify, this is really a correction, not a repurposing of money?
Correct. And it's not borrowing from next year's accounts, and we discussed all of this at finance in a lot of detail to make sure we were understanding the moving parts to it. So we took a vote at finance to approve the increase of the, now I can't find the piece of paper, but basically to increase the Circuit Breaker account from the $3.1 million amount to the $3.4 million amount that it should have accurately been. Now, today in an email, we heard from the interim comptroller that they had already, it looked like it was more or less a Scrivener's error, just an error in transposition, basically, in the wrong column being put in. So they've already updated the, because it was already voted by school committee last year, they've already updated the Circuit Breaker dollar amount from the $3.1 and change to the $3.4 and change. Nonetheless, it would be great if tonight we were to take that vote that we have in front of us, which finance unanimously recommended on Monday to the full school committee, which just has us updating the FY24 budget amount from the $3.1 to the $3.4. And just to be-
I need to read the motion, even though it will be your motion, since you have it in front of me.
I have it in front of me.
Oh, you do.
Yeah, I just, I'd scattered everything, and I had to find it. I had to claw out of the pile of papers. But to clarify, the dollar amount for this actually comes from the state, and it's based on a fraction of, where'd Lisa go? Now she's going to fact- going to fact check me. Do I get this? 75%, but there's 75% of costs above a certain amount per student. It's, right. So, yeah, so anyway, the, the Circuit Breaker essentially is the thing that reimburses districts for excess costs at the individual student level. And so the dollar amount is known in advance because we submit our total costs that are eligible and the district certifies them and then gives us the amount back. So, so we actually know a year in advance what we're going to get based on the prior year expenses. So that's why we knew what the dollar amount was. And, and so now we'll update it and that will again help minimize the deficit to now under $400,000. The plan is that finance is going to continue to work to whittle away that deficit and hopefully can get even further as they continue to check on things and everything else. And any remaining gap at the end of the fiscal year, we would pursue a reserve fund transfer from the advisory committee. And if that is denied, then we would use revolving funds from a, from FY25 to cover that gap because those are multi-year funds. But hopefully, we will whittle it away and/or advisory will, will approve the reserve fund transfer. But there's been a huge amount of work done by staff to, to bring us to this point. And it's really wonderful what they've been able to do to understand that. So I guess I'll just make the motion, which is to move the school committee accepts the modification of the FY24 Circuit Breaker Fund budget amount from $3,156,936 to $3,475,572 to match the entire amount of revenue collected in FY23. This change has been approved by the town acting comptroller, Michelle Tejada.
Do we have a second to the motion? Okay, Helen, thank you. Any discussion on this?
Yeah. I would like Lisa to come and talk about Circuit Breaker more in detail.
All right. Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, Lisa, that would be great.
So what would be the most helpful to talk about sort of that balcony view of, of what Circuit Breaker is?
Keep it like 40,000-foot view.
That 40,000.
And how it's calculated.
Right. So the Circuit Breaker reimburses, obviously, school districts for the portion of costs of educating special education students with the, with the highest needs. And the reimbursement is calculated on a per-student basis when the total amount of services exceeds an annual eligibility threshold. The state pays 75% of the costs above the threshold, subject to annual legislative appropriation. So, for example, if the state average, and again, this is 40,000-foot view, but if the state average foundation budget per pupil was $10,000 and the cost to educate a special education student is $50,000, then the district's eligible reimbursement at 75% would be $7,500. So usually, the eligibility threshold is tied to four times the state average foundation budget set by the Department of Elementary and Special Education. And it's actually the highest reimbursement we've, we've ever had, the 75% rate. But I think my understanding, I was coming back, Jody, Jody beckoned me back, but the calculation was made on the 20, FY23 rather than FY24. And that is why the adjusted, the adjusted amount. And of course, for FY25, our Circuit Breaker appropriation is already built into that approved budget voted by the school committee. We've already allocated those funds or earmarked those funds as part of our FY25 budget.
Jesse?
I, maybe I didn't follow one portion of this. You said that if, if the threshold was 10,000 and it costs 50,000 for the student.
If the foundation budget was 10,000 and the cost to educate the student was 50,000, then the reimbursement would be 75,000, 75%.
Because she said it's four times the foundation budget.
Because it's four times.
So it's 40,000 and then the excess of the 40,000 is 10. And then it's 75% of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So one of the things that happens is when we are able to bring students back, on the one hand, we save money not sending them to expensive placements. But on the other hand, we get less money per student because the outside placements, you, you get much more than you do for programs that we, we do. And we don't do it because of the money they're bringing students back. We do it because it's the right thing to do.
Chairman Lou, may I just add to that?
Yes.
You know, what I would say is that once the decision is made that a student is placed in a private school to meet their educational needs, that that is their best option for meeting their educational needs, every child is connected to a dollar and every dollar is connected to a child. And once that placement is made, we no longer control the cost because that out-of-district school has their own parameters. Last year, we built in a 14% increase for out-of-district placements. There's unpredictability in those costs. We have a lot more control. And of course, my bias is I believe that we can offer the richness of the Brookline curriculum. We can offer the community support. So whenever possible, programming within our district can provide a richer experience. But, but it's always at the team meeting process to, to make sure we are always prioritizing that child's educational needs. And if there is a school that can do it better than we can, then that is the education that child deserves. So, thank you.
Steven?
Thanks, Lisa. That was really helpful. I didn't know all that. I, I was, I just wanted to ask about the vote. I was, just following up on the email exchange that we received today, given that the acting comptroller says that we don't need this vote, what's the value of the vote?
Mariah?
Um, I don't know that there's a value to the vote, but we already recommended it at Finance Subcommittee and our deputy superintendent recommended it to us. And she's not here today to be able to opine on the email and the acting comptroller. So in her absence, I would prefer to take the vote, which doesn't hurt us in any way. And that way, we are covered either way.
Okay.
I'd like to call the.
Call the.
Are you calling the question?
Yeah.
Calling the question.
There being no further discussion. Sure. Jesse?
Yes.
Jesse votes yes.
Did I ever get a second? Did I ever get a second for the motion?
Yes, Helen seconded.
Okay. Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Val?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. All right. Thank you. So we can move on to our Subcommittee and Liaison Reports. We have some new Subcommittee Chairs, some old ones too. We can start with Helen at Capital Improvements.
The old one. I'm going to be very quick because the Celtics started playing already and we all need to get home.
We do have executive session.
I know. I know. So we're having a meeting of the Capital Subcommittee with the new members on Thursday, the 20th of June, from 4:00 to 6:00. The discussion will be around the summer work and where we're at with it, how it's moving along in terms of bidding, et cetera. Just a quick update about Pierce. There was a fabulous picnic, end of the year picnic that they had, along with visits within the school for both former teachers, principals. I saw Chris Fields there, who Raya may know, remember? She wasn't, she wasn't your principal?
I wasn't a first student.
Oh.
No.
Hey, get back.
Piper, Piper was my kids' one.
Never mind. Never mind. And it was just a really joyous event. At the event, there was a table with Leftfield and our consultant on geothermal, talking with people at the event about what's going to be happening at the park and why we're putting in geothermal and the, the project in general. And people could sign up and still can sign up to get information from the project as we're moving along throughout the next few, four years. So that was one thing. Driscoll's geothermal is moving along. And we're hopeful that, I think it was September 19th, I saw is the date for the playground to be finished. So.
That's correct.
Oh, thank you, Val. I'm sorry. I didn't know you were here. Do you want to?
No, that's okay. Keep going.
Okay. And, and the one other thing, just that people know, in terms of Pierce and the vacating of the school, much of the furniture, et cetera, will be going to the different sites that they'll be at. But there is stuff that they have surplus. They've asked other teachers within the district to come by, pick up stuff. They also, I think, opened it up somewhat to the community. And if all else fails, Karen King, in her wonderful way, has hired a recycling company that will come and pick up everything and recycle it. So.
And on that also, I checked in with the administrator today. Susan has also been working with the team to settle the Newberry MOA. And so I think we're, it's ready for signatures. So it should be coming around. It should be coming around pretty quickly, hopefully.
I, I think the school committee has to approve it.
I think you all pre-voted us to negotiate and then settle it, but.
Maybe we did.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just to follow up to Helen.
Yeah.
You're saying that there's an opportunity for residents perhaps within Brookline to utilize some of the surplus furniture?
I think so. I, that.
So my question was going to be, could we share this with the, like, the town meeting Members Association listserv and they get out to their precinct people about it? Because I'm sure they don't know about it if they don't have kids in the schools.
Let me check on that.
Thank you.
Because there's some issues with disposal of surplus and it can get kind of.
Okay.
Weird. So let me check on that.
I got the question from a town meeting member, actually.
Helen, Pierce has already been giving out stuff for free.
Yeah.
Like, they already had their first community, like, stuff, I don't know if it was inside the building or outside the building. I think it was outside. Jamie announced it on Facebook like two weeks ago and they were like, come and get it. And people came and got it. So I think, and I know that Mothers Out Front is very interested in facilitating and I think they're still maybe waiting for some calls back as well.
Okay. So I will talk with Karen.
Because it's not just about Pierce too, it's about Clark Road as well.
Yes. No, no. And both of those are, she has it also with the same, if all else fails, the same recycling.
Yeah, but I, I really hope that we do get the public able to participate. Thank you. That word was.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. A couple of capital updates from town meeting. So there were two capital items up at town meeting where the school committee had taken a position. In both cases, town meeting agreed with the school committee. So the town will proceed with a home rule petition to enable geothermal wells under Pierce Park. And we get the $95,675. That was the difference between the select board and AC versions of warrant Article 10. This will allow us to convert the lower level of the Baldwin School into a learning center for our educators. So that was town meeting. Suzanne does curriculum and is not here, so we can put that off until next week. Sarah does DEIJ and is not here. So again, next week. Mariah, do you have any finance updates that we haven't already heard?
Um, no, the only thing, the two things I would mention, one is we did have a discussion on enrollment in sections. In addition to the FY24 budget discussion, we had a discussion on enrollment in sections at Monday's finance meeting that included the update that there is a reduction of the number of Pierce Kindergartens and an increase in the number of sections in Hays Fourth Grade for next year. And you heard the parent commentary tonight. And there was a lot of discussion in the meeting about some of those issues and questions that school committee had for, I think, Linus and ASA, although ASA wasn't present, but just about how that would be the planning for going forward. And I think, as one of the parents mentioned, we asked for an update in July. The other thing I wanted to mention, I don't have an actual, like, dollar amount for the accounts payable report, but there was one thing tonight that I wanted to report on, which was this, today's, this batch, which is tomorrow's batch that I was signing off on, included $11,819.12 for the third-party processor that examines the services provided by the district and then bills insurance for them. I think it's, is it only Medicaid, Lisa? Do you know? The third-party processor who goes through, it's only for Medicaid? Is that correct?
Medicaid.
Okay. But anyways, I think they are costs, they charge us, I think, 10%. Is it 10%? Do you remember of the, I think it's 10%. So essentially, the $11,819, if I recall correctly, represents 110, 120, 118,000 of, of money that the district then bills insurance for. And then that money comes back to the town general fund. So it's actually, it's a good investment. The expense comes out of the school PSP budget, but then the, the return comes back to the town and flows through the normal income flow, like town-school partnership flow.
Sure. I have a question on that. That's money that we expended to get the services for the students and then it goes to the town. That doesn't seem to make sense. What's that?
Ish. Yeah. Ish. Yeah. Yeah, it's true.
I mean, it's almost like it should go into a revolving fund.
It's almost like the town-school partnership doesn't reflect the actual dynamics of what goes on. And the town administrator and superintendent will hopefully start to propose a new formula that might accurately reflect the different things going on.
I think that would be a good idea.
I hope so. I hope it's, we talked about it maybe happening this summer. I don't know if that's realistic. But it would be really good to really start to think about all these different ebbs and flows of money and have costs start to match expenses and things be, and, and increases and decreases be reflected in the formula as well.
Well, especially if we're bringing money in.
And I think what you said there, Mariah, is, is the key point is accurately getting our arms around all of those pieces. And I think that's what Susan, the finance team, as well as the deputies are doing, is just saying, how big is our breadbox and where are all these moving parts are?
Yeah.
I think we're, we're getting, getting stronger about that.
And I know we deferred it because Susan was coming in and was rebuilding the finance team and they didn't have that historical knowledge to really be able to participate in that process in an informed way. So it's good that they're starting to get there and hopefully we have. And similarly, I think on the town side, a lot of the people have turned over in the past year or two as well. So this was an opportunity for everyone to get caught up. But, but it is something that the people who go to town-school partnership have talked about. And I know that, yes, that you, you both have committed to doing that work and it'll be good.
I'm sorry. I was wondering, said we have to hurry up. But, but I just realized, so that is just a monthly. No, that's for the whole year.
It's not monthly.
$11,000 is for the whole.
No, $11,000 is what they charge us. I want to say that I usually see this coming through maybe twice a year. And $11,000 is low. I usually see it coming through at like 40,000. So.
So we're talking maybe a half million dollars.
Yeah.
Over the year, if not more. Maybe we could monetize that.
Well, we are monetizing it, but maybe not to the scale you.
No, so that we are aware how much is going back to the town.
Yeah, we can, I mean, I can ask Susan when, or Diane.
Well, I think that Lisa.
I don't know that Lisa knows the billings of this. This is something done on the finance side, not on the OSS side. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
All right. Thank you, Mariah. Val, any updates on government relations?
Yes. In the Senate budget, the, the minimum per pupil went up from $104 to $110. See if that holds in Conference Committee, but that's what passed in the Senate unanimously.
How much was the governor's?
104. And the House was 104.
I see. Okay.
All right. Thank you. Suzanne does negotiations and is not here. Steve, policy?
Thanks, Andy. We're going to have our, our policy meeting on Monday, June 10th. And we're going to have MASC field director for Brookline, Jim Handy, facilitate a kind of workshop for us. And some new as a policy chair. And we have a couple of new members. Actually, we're all new. Val, were you on it previously? Sorry if you were.
Yeah. I've been on for three years. Yep.
Apologies. I forget who's on which committee. Jesse and Carolyn are new, at least, to review the responsibilities and some good practices for policy subcommittees. So I invite everyone to join. I think that'll be. I think that'll be interesting at the least. And Dr. Gilleri has accepted our entreaties to liaise with the policy subcommittee as well. So that's, that will be, hopefully, a productive change.
Will that be in person, Steven?
It will be hybrid.
Hybrid, okay, so it will be recorded for those who can't be there?
Oh, Andy, can I have one more finance?
Yes, Mariah, another finance update.
Sorry, just to mention that finance will be meeting again on the 26th to sort of have a close-the-year conversation. We'll also be talking about the class guidelines document.
All right, any other liaisons and updates?
Yeah, one more from me. Also, on Sunday, is that right, Betsy? It's Sunday from 10 to 2?
Yes.
We're having another kind of workshop. As we start to wind down the Climate and Sustainability Task Force, we're having a workshop to workshop recommendations for all four subgroups. And this will probably be our only in-person get-together for the Climate and Sustainability Task Force. And that's in preparation for the presentation that is the final deliverable of the task force.
Okay, great, thank you. Any new business? Jesse?
I have a proposal or idea I wanted to float. In the next few weeks, we will complete the 23-24 PSB academic school year. This year continues to be especially difficult for some in the aftermath of the events of October 7, 2023, in the Middle East. Interactions between students, interactions between faculty, interactions between administrators and stakeholders, and even interactions between students and faculty have been, at times, extraordinarily strained. As is clear, the ongoing conflict continues to affect our community in very serious ways. There have been many reported and unreported incidences of hate this past academic year that caused affected students and faculty to feel uncomfortable, unwelcome, and unsafe. While efforts are underway in our policy subcommittee to craft a hate incident prevention policy, it is possible that such a policy will not be ready by the start of the coming school year. I therefore wanted to propose that in collaboration with staff, we consider intentional efforts during the start of the upcoming year guided by a set of commitments for three things. One is showing respect to others in our actions and words, even if we disagree, considering the feelings of others when we speak, and appreciating the differences that exist when we interact with others. So as we begin the upcoming year, the adoption of such a proposal with or without a finalized hate incident prevention policy may help to improve interactions between people within our school community. At the very least, widespread dissemination of commitments like the ones I have described, perhaps reinforced by providing a tangible, may benefit our schools in small but ultimately impactful ways. More respectful conversations and empathetic interactions, and perhaps an inner feeling of comfort, knowing that the person with whom we are interacting respects, considers, and appreciates me. Thank you.
So do we already, as school begins, sort of do something like this intentionally? I mean, I know, I think some principals will do this, but is there anything that we do as a district to start off the school year with this kind of messaging?
Are you talking about, like, community norms?
Yeah, this kind of norm-setting at the beginning of the year.
So I guess that was my question for Jesse. Is that what you're asking for, for the district to adopt community norms? Or what is the specific ask? Is it a policy? Is it a statement? I'm just trying to wrap my hands around what you're.
Right, it's something actually, yeah, actually, because I won't be able to be here at next week's meeting, I, and I wanted to meet Matt and talk about it in advance, but there was no time. This would have been something I would, I had already reached out to him via email, but we just didn't have a chance to have any discussion about this in advance. It could be that there is some wisdom to doing this and that their staff is already looking and doing something like this at the beginning of the year. I'm not, I'm not sure because I didn't have a chance to discuss it with them. But the idea is that there would be some kind of, perhaps already a plan, to start this coming academic year with some kind of shared commitment. And across the board, not just for students, but students, faculty, administration.
Any other committee members like to weigh in on this?
I think that having, not having a policy, but rather having more of this sort of practice of, you know, which is something I think we do anyways in kindergarten. I know we say, "Be kind to others," you know? It's sort of like, you know, the ethos of what we do usually. But maybe to just sort of highlight it more for staff and principals, principals that who can then talk to their staff about it at their meetings. Because it is important, and it is our value.
Exactly, and it's something that we, perhaps in the heat of politics and ideology, we sort of forget that we're all people and different lived experiences, and that the, you know, in the same way Matt spoke about, you know, how a student who is feeling challenged can feel alone, can feel, loses their sense of mooring and, you know, belonging, you know, how people treat each other and what kind of culture they see is part of that whole issue of building a very, you know, positive, maintaining a very positive school community. And so I think if we, you know, I mean, I don't want to put out specifically, Val, what those tangibles could be, but, you know, in thinking about it the last couple of days, I said, well, you know, a bookmark that's got these three commitments on it that go, do they still use textbooks? Yeah, I saw one at town meeting, there was one left in the auditorium on statistics, so somebody had one. So, or maybe in the library when they take out books, they sell the library, right? So, you know, maybe, maybe in there, the librarians are, you know, it's available. And it's just sort of reinforced so that these are, this is something that we can, as you said, Andy, as like a shared norm or a value that we want to reinforce at the beginning of the year, sort of put us on, you know, sort of on a path. It's something people know already, but sometimes just easy to sort of get, it gets pushed aside where things could happen. So sort of a re-centering.
I think what may be helpful is for us to take a look, not that it's school committee's role in what each of the schools have as their, what do they call them, Jody?
I think it's "be kind."
Yeah, yeah, I can hear FRR because we just did it for the JFK ceremony. But each of our schools has those types of mottos or core commitments and agreements and those types of things.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And it may be helpful for just the committee to see what those are, because each school has those committed values as well, yeah.
Head of school Meyer also spoke about this at the VHS commencement. He talked about basically the need to not be so quick to take offense at other people and to assume good intentions.
Thank you.
All right, I'll make a quick comment. So that, I'm interested in what you're saying, and I think it does sort of just, it can be something as simple as just sort of going back to our old mottos. Like, when I was campaigning, I kept thinking about the Baker School, I think, has a sign that says, "Work hard, be kind." That works? That's, that's pretty much sums it up. And there's so much, you know, interesting work that's been happening in schools and culture, and we talk a lot about groups, and that's important. Having, like, affinity groups, we talk a lot about groups and sort of differences. And I think, I feel like we used to just sort of hear more and talk more, the kind of underpinning used to be more about unity and tolerance. And I think the goal is always the same, but I'm interested in just hearing that kind of vocabulary also. So, interesting, thank you.
All right, thanks, Jesse. Are there any other new businesses? Is there any other new business? Right, it didn't come out right the first time. All right, there being, there being then, I will move to meet an executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, for the following purposes. Purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the BEU Unit A and paraprofessional unit if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigating position of the committee and the chair so declares. Purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the BEU Unit A grievance if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigating position of the committee and the chair so declares. And purpose seven, to review and approve executive session minutes from the following meeting, May 2, 2024. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jesse. Jesse, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mariah?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Steven?
Aye.
And Val?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes as well. And we will now be returning to open session.
And the Celtics are up by 10 points.
Recording stopped.